Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the November, it's already November, November 18th, 2024 Committee of the Whole meeting to order at 6:31 PM. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meeting, and so both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via webex. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting, and we have some lovely public members here with us and online. So there is first a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or if you want to wait through the entire presentation, kind of hear what's going on, you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on any of tonight's three agenda items. So we'll start with this general public comment. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, you're going to look for the virtual hand. If you're on a computer or smartphone, look for that hand icon, or you can send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, you can press star three. If you're in the room and didn't sign up, we will ask four speakers before closing that portion of the meeting. So I believe we have some people signed up to speak, so I'll just move on to that portion. You are invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, if you're in person, you'll step up to the lectern, press the button so that the microphone shows up red, or online, unmute your microphone. State your name, address, and your relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. There will be a timer. If you're attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. So Clerk, can you identify the first person who has signed up to speak?
Sorry? Yes, we have seven individuals in the chambers here and two virtual attendees indicating a desire to speak. So I'll assume you'll want to speak at the top of the meeting here, but if you'd prefer to wait, just let me know and I'll skip over you. So the first person is Sharon Freyas.
In the short people position. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. I'm the majority owner of Art by Fire down here on Front Street. We're the glassblowing studio. As many of you have heard, the starving artist thing, it's really true. We are a very small business. Both my husband and I also still have our tech jobs to keep that business open. So we are very dependent on the things that Issaquah provides in order to keep our business open. One of the big things that has helped us is the Downtown Issaquah Association. That extra foot traffic they bring really helps our business to stay running. So I am wanting to urge you all to please give it what funding you can, and especially take advantage of that Main Street tax credit. It's a great way to stretch the city's budget and make the dollars count as much as possible. We have been in business many years. We've had many, I've had kids that have come to make Christmas ornaments that are now adults bringing their own kids. And we really love it here. When we were moving here, we looked all around the area, and this quaint downtown is what attracted us to buy our home in Issaquah. And then we ended up purchasing the business when the owners retired. And we've often said that if it was often some industrial park or something, we wouldn't be at all interested in having it. It is that downtown quaintness that's provided by the flower baskets, the events, the art walks, the wine walks, and all the different things that Dia provides. So as much as we can, we've volunteered over the years. Art and I have both been on their board at various times. And you know, even though we're both working two jobs, we try to make time for it because it really does make an impact both to our community and to our business. So thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Sharon. And next, Art Freyas. Art?
Good evening. I'm here to also speak in support of, you know, the missions that the city and Dia do together. And there's that emotional part that Sharon talked about. We have families that always do two Christmas trees, and the one Christmas tree is nothing but ornaments they've made at the shop. And there's multiple families that do that. We've had everything from Girl Scouts. We have taught glassblowing to a woman and her sister who were blind. We've had people who need, you know, wheelchairs for assistance blow glass. It is a unique, it is a special thing that is frankly dying out in this area. A lot of glass studios have gone under, particularly during the COVID timeframe. What Dia and the city have brought to us is an ability to reach out, an ability to have more financial resources and stability. When we have art walks, or when we have particularly Issaquah Does Apples, or you know, the other events, we're pretty much guaranteed anywhere from, anywhere from 75% greater revenue those days or nights to over 100% revenue. We've had revenue during Issaquah Does Apples that has equaled, and maybe a little more than our average days at Salmon Days. Though the impact to our business was huge. The streetery during COVID, that kept us alive. That gave us a really, you know, a lifeline that we desperately needed because we were nonessential. We were closed down for months. And it's, it's a huge deal to shut down a glass shop because it's five to seven days when you shut down, and it's five to seven days to bring it back up. Otherwise, the furnace doesn't live. So really, Dia has given us an ability to reach out to so many more people. It's given us the ability to give jobs to our staff. We have, you know, our full-time lead artist. We have two assistants. We have another lead glass blower. We have an internet salesperson. We're looking right now for a gallery assistant, but we also have a gallery assistant. These people have jobs. These people have more security because of the help we get from the city and Dia. So anything you can do to, you know, invigorate and help that mission is really important to us. It's important to, I don't really want to say customers because so many of them are more like friends. It's important to our friends of the shop. And it's important, you know, to us as, you know, stewards of something that could go away. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Art. I'm sure there's going to be somebody else coming after you. I think so. Who do we have next?
Kaylee Jake.
Kaylee?
Hi, my name is Kaylee Jake. I'm the Executive Director of The Garage. My address is 24706 Southeast 30th Streets, Mamish, 98075. So I just, I have a couple of things that I wanted to say tonight. And one is I wanted to thank you all for listening to the teens from The Garage last time they spoke about Metro Flex. This is a really important service that provides transportation for the teens that come to The Garage so that they can swing by and, you know, access anything from a cup of coffee to meeting with their case manager, mental health therapist, before they go home. Or it also allows them to come down before they go to their job. So, and then we, we have teens that are outside of our city but are able to access us because of Metro Flex. So this is just an amazing service that you all have brought, and I just want to thank you for putting it back into the budget for this next year. I also wanted to thank you all. A couple of you attended our community event last week, and I cannot say how much that means to them. Our community event was on civics, and they had a lot of thoughts and feelings. But to be heard from their local city government, so for you all to take that time is just really impactful, and I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thanks, Kaylee. And who's next on our sign up list?
Erin Longchari.
Erin?
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I didn't know that I had signed up, but of course I have things to say. Erin Longchari, I am a resident of North Bend, Washington, but a longtime worker in the nonprofit landscape in Issaquah. It's the only place I've worked in Washington. It does feel like my second home. Echoing Kaylee's thoughts, I want to thank the council for, I'm currently working at The Garage, and I want to thank the council for their time and consideration in thinking through the Metro Flex. Kaylee already illustrated why that's such an important service. We have a team here today who's going to do so. I also want to thank you all for your work on the budget. This is a really hard enterprise. It's thankless in many ways. And Human Services appreciates the time and consideration that you put into your partnerships in the, in the community. It really means a lot. And thank you for doing this hard work at a less than optimal time. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. And Tisha, who's our next?
Simon Field.
Simon, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Simon Fields. I am a resident of the City of Sammish. However, I am in Issaquah two to three times a week to visit The Garage. It is a critical resource for teens such as myself to access, like Kaylee said, anything from a cup of coffee to a case manager. I am very thankful to City Council for extending, for renewing the services provided by Metro Flex that allow me often to get from the plateau to here to use those services. And I can only urge you to continue to renew that so that teens that their adults are busy, or they don't have a car, or the bus is not working well, can be able to access those services. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Simon. Appreciate it. And?
Corby Kessler.
Corby, come on up.
Again. Hi, I'm Corby Kessler. I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown Issaquah Association. I wanted to clarify some things around what a Main Street community is. I am Main Street. Our businesses, our hundreds of volunteers are Main Street. It's comprised of the community, so it's not an entity that gets membership or derives any benefit from outside funding. Our funding comes from our tax credit incentive program from the state. It comes from donations from businesses. The city has availed itself of the tax credit program, as have a number of our businesses. So I just wanted to be clear that Dia has been a Main Street community since its inception, nearly since its inception 30 years ago. So if you have any more Main Street questions, please contact me. I want to thank the city for rethinking the funding of Dia. I understand coming in that there was going to be no funding for 2025, and it since has changed. I don't know the details. I haven't seen it yet. I'll stay for the meeting and learn more. I really appreciate it because I know there have been some issues for the last five years before my time, and I just want to make sure that we're moving forward, not looking back, and making sure we're all doing our best to serve our small, family-owned businesses. It scares me, the thought of what happens to a downtown when the lights are off. And some of the lights will be off, literally. The holiday lights will be off. And I know, again, I'm so appreciative of the work that has to be done with the budget. I have to manage my own budget. I'm very cognizant of what we need to do. I just want to make sure there are a couple of things that we consider when we consider the budget. One is the tax credit incentive program. Just make sure that we are doing everything we can to keep those monies in Issaquah. 25 cents on the dollar. If the city puts 25 cents from the operating fund into Dia's budget, 75 cents goes back to the Downtown Issaquah Association and those small businesses rather than the utility tax going back to Olympia. I just want to keep it local, and that's what Main Street intended when they created the program. The other thing is, we can do this, and I know that we have some work to do. And the city and Dia need to come together in a lot of ways and collaborate. We can't do it alone. Nobody can do this alone. And with budget cuts, I think it's important for governments to lean on nonprofits. That's what we're here for. We can add the value at very little cost. We're all volunteers. I'm the only paid staff member. So we do it very leanly and cleanly. We, we want to make sure that we stay agile, we stay responsive to the businesses, and to all of our stakeholders. So please consider the tax credit incentive program and making sure that we keep those monies here locally. Thank you.
Thanks, Corby. And who else do we have signed up?
Barbara Mayfield.
Barbara, come on up.
My name is Barbara Mayfield. My name is Barbara Mayfield. I reside in North Bend, but I have family in the Isquah Highlands and grandkids that attend Grand Ridge, so I'm very familiar there. And I own a business in the Downtown Isquah Plaza. It's that way. So you can practically see it from your chambers. I moved into that spot from Western Issaquah. I was over in the Cascade Business Park, I'm sorry, beforehand, and moved in there in March, February, March of 2023. The very first day that I moved in, I went to a Dia general meeting, annual meeting down at The Cellars. And I was so impressed by their plans for activities throughout the downtown core that I just was amazed at what they provided and wished I'd known what they provided before I had signs made and things like that because they do provide networking for us downtown business owners. During the summer months of 2023, I hosted, I was one of the hosts for the wine walks. And the amount of business, the amount of people that they brought into my doors that would never have seen me were a long-arm quilting machine showroom, which is kind of a unicorn. There's not very many of us around. My business, since I moved to Downtown Isquah Plaza, has increased at least 25% over the other side of Isquah. And I'm very happy where I'm at. I would be sad to see the amount of people that get to see what goes on in Downtown Isquah be stopped because the activities have to stop. I do plead with you to continue to fund Dia to the best extent that you can. I support them myself financially, and I really would love to see you be able to do that on behalf of the businesses. I plan to be here for a full 10 years. So thank you very much for listening.
Thanks, Barbara. And do we have anybody signed up?
Rob Peters.
Rob, come on up.
Thanks for your time. I own the landscaping and lighting company. My company does the lighting for Issaquah the last few years, and we also do North Bend and Fall City. I moved here about 22 years ago, and one of the things we loved about the town when we moved here was the hanging baskets. My wife loved it. We were from Texas, and like, you just can't get flowers to grow like that. And she, that was just the most amazing thing she'd ever seen. And, you know, I found out that Dia did that. And, and I had a lighting business for 35 years, and I've always wanted to give back. And I was like, why don't we light the city up? It would just be so beautiful. And Dia reached out to me. We were able to make it happen. And another thing is the, you know, when I work with North Bend, they have a real cooperative relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, actually partner with everything with them, with their lighting when they do that. And it just doesn't seem like it's the same with, with Dia and the City of Isquah. So I'm hoping that that can get rectified. And the, I know that working with the, every dollar that they take, they're super, super frugal, and with all the volunteers. I volunteer and do the Shell Station still. We're going to do it this year. Without Dia, that wouldn't happen. So I just think it's something that should be continued as long as possible, and if you can do what you can to fund it, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Do we have anybody else signed up to speak?
Yes, we have at least one virtual attendee. The first is Robert Lurch. And Robert, I've just made you a panelist, so you should now see an option to unmute, and you can also choose to turn your video on if you'd like.
Sorry, was that for me?
It sure was. You're up.
Yes, thanks.
Awesome. Well, good evening, council. My name is Robert Lurch, and I am one of the owners of Pickles Playland. We're a doggy daycare located downtown. We've been down there for about a year. And if you've heard me speak before, you'll know that we have three locations. One in Redmond, one in Kirkland, and, like I said, the one in Issaquah. And I lived in Issaquah for 20 years. Both my kids graduated from Isquah High School. And so I have this big affinity for the community. And I'm here to speak about Dia and its impact on our business. I've mentioned before that even though we've been in Kirkland or Redmond for better part of six years, we're not affiliated with any of the programs or the nonprofits in those communities. But we are all in on Dia. When I say we, I mean, my, my partner and I are both committee members. We opened our doors to host events, and the reason we're all in on Dia is because Dia has been all in on us. Before we even signed our lease, Christina reached out to us and said, what can we do, meaning Dia, to make introductions, to give you resources, to help you with permitting? And that's something that, that was revelatory. We've never experienced, at least I've never experienced, that in my business community where I had somebody who reached out to me, that not looking for money, but just merely looking to help. And it wasn't just a platitude because the minute we opened our doors, Christina was knocking on our door quite literally to come in and say, okay, what can we do as far as signage? What do you need from us? And we've never had that support from any other organizations. I'm not, I'm not going to try to throw Chamber of Commerce's under the buster. It's just an anomaly to have somebody who cares in an organization that cares that much for work for small businesses. We really felt it. And to give you an example, I just ended a social media campaign for our Isquah location. So spent $15,000 on a social media expert, did Bing searches, Google searches, and I just finished it. And the net result was that I earned five times more clients from Dia events than I did for spending $15,000 on Facebook ads. And so that really, and over and above just the money, it's been, it's a bit of, it's not even hyperbolic to say that I've probably spoken with 1,000 residents in Downtown Isquah by opening our doors up to the wine walks, to the art walks, to the Issaquah Goes Apples, to all those events. We've met so many people in the community who just want to come in and chat about dogs, or wine, or whatever, truly feel like we're a part of the community. And that's indicative of the impact that Dia had. So much so that for the last couple of months, everyone in my location has been collecting toys and clothes for both humans and for dogs. So we were going to have, the first time ever, we were going to put on, and we did just put it on last weekend, a family giving event. And of course, we held it in Isquah. So although we were collecting toys and clothes in Kirkland and Redmond, we distributed them in Isquah. And the toys that we have left over were donating to the Isquah Food Bank. So that's just a sort of a minor indication of our, really our warmth for the community. And again, that has been part and parcel to the warmth that Dia has extended to us. We've only been there for a year, although, like I said, I've lived in Isquah for 20 years. But again, we feel closer and more tied in to Isquah than we do in any other community. And so one of the reasons we're, as successful we have been is because we, we know we have this relationship that's bigger than us. And the fact that we are, you know, providing a service that people, a award-winning service that people like to the citizens of Isquah, the fact that we're paying property tax and, you know, excise tax, we're employing people, and doing things like this giving bizarre that we had this weekend is really is in large part to our, our relationship with Dia. So again, I know your job is difficult. I do, every single day, I'm allocating resources amongst my businesses and trying to make it sure that we're successful. But if you please consider sort of the ancillary benefits supporting an organization like Dia in your budgeting discussions, I would greatly appreciate it. Thanks for your time, council.
Thank you, Robert. And Clerk, do we have anyone else indicating a desire to speak?
Virtually, I'm going to check in real quick with Brian Runberg. I know he'd like to make comments on the comprehensive plan, and let me see if he'd like to do that now or later in the meeting. So Brian, you've just been made a panelist, and would you like to make your comments now? And we're having some trouble hearing you. We can see you.
Still can't hear you. No. Nope. Nope. You keep trying. We appreciate that. Yeah. Why don't we see if there's anybody in the chamber or online that wants to make a comment while you work on your audio, and we'll see if we can check back in with you. So I will just take a moment and see if there's anybody on hand that has not spoken that would be interested to speak. Not seeing anybody in person. I'll just check in.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Great.
Oh, wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you. I'm Brian Runberg. I'm the principal at the Runberg Architecture Group, and I also own the property at 1085 Lake Drive, formerly the Red Robin, over in Pickering, Pickering Place. And I'm commenting tonight on the comprehensive plan periodic update. We, as you are aware, and we've been, went through with the group here with the pioneer project status, and I appreciate, appreciate that process. And we're attempting to redevelop the site into much-needed mixed-use multifamily housing in Central Isquah. The Central Isquah vision is defined as where people live, work, play, and learn. However, there's no living, no housing on the north side of the I-90 within the urban core boundary. And what we're experiencing now, there's, there's no, there's current challenges that we're experiencing in producing this housing. Due to a, the code is overly prescriptive and has inherent conflicts that haven't been exposed or applied to the industry. I think we're the first project going through. Second, compounding that is inflexibility. There isn't, or does not seem to be any mechanism within the code to accommodate flexibility such as alternative equivalent paths to meet the intent of the code, where what we usually experience in most cities, administrative departures or director's decisions. The only path available for a majority land use code in Isquah currently is a variance process, which the staff does not feel empowered to deploy even when situations meet the variance criteria. We feel that the comprehensive plan is the right vehicle to establish the policy intent to allow code flexibility and an off-ramp for some of the city's overly prescriptive design standards that conflict with the inherent overall comp plan policies. And I'll give you one example. We have dozens and dozens of them that we've uncovered. But Land Use Policy A2 states, ensure the development regulations, including allowed density uses and site requirements, support Isquah's preferred land use pattern. So what, what we would suggest and propose is adding a line in the, in the, in the comp plan amendment here is quote-unquote, "to provide administrative flexibility to deviate from building standards to achieve these goals." We can submit these in writing tomorrow and welcome a dialogue around how the comp plan should encourage flexibility so that going forward, the city is able to better reach its goals, and particularly in Central Isquah. So thank you for the opportunity to speak and present that to you.
Thanks, Brian. And I'll just check. I know we've checked in person, but is there anybody else online that might be indicating a desire to speak? And I'll just check. I know we've checked in person, but is there anybody else online that might be indicating a desire to speak?
No.
Okay, fantastic. Well, we heard from a bunch of folks, which is always appreciated. We always encourage your involvement and hearing from the perspective of Dia businesses and executive director as well as people from the garage and students there. And then someone on the comp plan, just really appreciate everyone's perspective on that. So we've got a busy agenda this evening. You're welcome to stay, but you know, you don't have to if you don't want to. So looking on to the next agenda item, we've got COM 0040, Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. And this is presented by Stephen Padua, Planning Manager.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. And good evening, Council members. So tonight, I'm going to present on the comprehensive plan as amended and proposed in tonight's packet. The purpose is to go over at a high level, all the amendments that we're proposing for the periodic update, the comprehensive plan, and to solicit any additional amendments from City Council in discussion tonight. So the one direction needed for tonight is, does City Council want any additional amendments to recommend as part of the plan prior to adoption? A little background information for the comprehensive plan. So the, beyond the purpose of being the city's high-level guiding, policy-guiding document, the comprehensive plan meets a series of requirements from the Washington State Growth Management Act. The conference plan addresses urban growth and economic development, regional transportation and infrastructure needs, preservation of open space, affordable housing, and public participation in the planning process, in city planning processes. And what we call this is the planning framework for the city of Issaquah. And the conference plan provides guidance to many of our functional plans or topic areas where we identify implementation and identification of actions and prioritization of resources when it comes to implementation of different topic areas. And all those functional plans feed into implementation and financing in our strategic plan, which you're going to hear more about later tonight, as well as the city budget and, and many of the regulations in municipal code. And then come full circle, our performance metrics, we take a look at how we're doing, how we're gauging our performance in all those topic areas, which brings us back to the comprehensive plan to make any necessary adjustments to make sure that we're achieving what we want to achieve over time. So for this periodic update, we're proposing nine elements. I'll go over each of them a little later in this presentation, but for the most part, there are three elements that aren't necessarily required by the state and the city has chosen to incorporate these elements as priority topic areas to identify and discuss as the city continues to grow. The human services and the arts and culture elements are two of those elements that the city has decided to add into the conference plan as we consider growth. And the environment, climate element is identified a little bit differently because it's technically not required yet. But per House Bill 1181, it will be required by the city in 2029. But because of the amazing work done by our sustainability staff, we're ahead. We have all the elements that are required, at least as we know of, for House Bill 1181 to comply with what's required from that bill in 2029. So for the process for the periodic update, you can kind of look at in two different phases. For the first phase, staff looked at each of the individual elements to identify any required changes from the state, the region, or the county. But also look at our system plan updates or our functional plan updates to see if we're addressing any required changes within functional plans in the different topic areas. Once staff assessed the different elements, we went to the respective boards, commissions, and the council committees to propose different policy questions. And then we refined, refined each of the elements before getting to Phase Two, which was Assembly for the, the latest phase for the conference plan, which was fully reviewed by the Planning Policy Commission and the Planning Development Environment Council Committee, which brings us today for final review with the full City Council. The general themes for the comprehensive plan update, we had three different areas. The first being identifying and assessing all the different state requirements that have been put in place since our last periodic update in 2015. We made major changes to our housing policies and the direction we want to go with housing. We made a lot of changes that relates to the environment, natural, natural environment, climate, addressing climate change. We also looked at addressing access and the amount of services provided or not provided for disadvantaged communities. Across the board, we also looked at diversity, equity, inclusion values within all the policy and goal areas and all the different elements. And then we also looked at the functional plans to make sure that we were consistent in the terminology that we're using, but also in the strategies for how we are addressing each of the different topic areas. The last piece we looked at for the comprehensive plan update was design and access. So currently, the conference plan is identified in multiple different PDFs on the city website that a lot of people have a little difficulty accessing, but also using. So what we're planning to do and something that we decided to do in early on, which influenced the design of the conference plan, is we want to put it on the code publishing platform with our municipal code. And what this allows us to do is make it a little bit easier to search, but also adds more search functionality to how we're using the conference plan. The community matters for also staff. It also allows us to create links with our municipal code so that any references to the conference plan has a direct link to where that's identified in the conference. Now I'm going to just provide a brief overview for each of the sections of the conference plan. For the introduction, we primarily simplified it. We really wanted to dive into what does the comprehensive plan provide us whilst telling the story of who this, this city is and who we want to be as part of this conference plan planning process. It aligns the process for the periodic update. And then it identifies the strategic plan guiding principles to link with the implementation and performance metrics on how we want to gauge our performance for implementation. For the land use and sustainability element, we paired the changes with this element with the creation of the new environment and climate element because many of the policies that created the new environment and climate element came from our existing land use element. So we split it in half, created the two separate elements. And then we went through each of the policies and goal areas for the land use sustainability event to make sure equity was being addressed, to make sure that our housing and job targets are identified. We also moved several policies to an environment element as part of the discussions with an environmental board and planning policy commission. And then with land use sustainability, we considered a rezone redesignation of City Hall Northwest. So for the redesignation, rezone of the city property, also known as City Hall Northwest, we proposed a rezone of community facilities, facilities to Urban Core and a redesignation from community facilities to mixed use. And this was reviewed by the Hearing Examiner and the Hearing Examiner is recommending, is supporting the staff recommendation for the rezone and the redesignation. For the housing element, we, a lot of the changes were in compliance with multiple several state mandates around housing. The first being House Bill 1220, which looked at emergency permanent supportive housing, positional housing and emergency shelters. So we added new policies and modified policies to support many of the changes that went into this. And earlier this year, City Council adopted code updates that allowed a lot of these uses to fully comply with House Bill. We also looked at House Bill 1337 and 1110 to address middle housing and accessory dwelling units or ADUs to what we want out of middle housing and how that should go into our regulations, which is a concurrent project ongoing that City Council will discuss early next year. Additionally, we also reviewed the policies and ensured equity was being addressed in a lot of our housing policies in combination with policy updates to the land use element. And then we also identified the affordable housing targets, which was the other last component to compliance with House Bill 1220. For the transportation element, we actually updated our mobility master plan only a few years ago. So many of those goals and policies were more recently updated. So for this periodic update, we focused, focused a lot of efforts around what the recommendations came out of the transit studies, so transit-specific policies to support the Light Rail Planning Guide, as well as our transit system updates that were proposed from the transit study. We also made changes to comply with House Bill 1181, which identified new level of service standards for transit. And then we also identified goals and policies that looked at equity and access as related to non-motorized transportation, walking or biking in city Issaquah. And for this new element, environment, climate stewardship, we, this, we created this element primarily to comply with House Bill 1181. But by creating this element, it also emphasizes the importance of the natural environment and addressing climate change in the Issaquah community, which is very apparent in the creation of the Climate Action Plan, the discussions on the resources dedicated for how we want to address climate change. And then it's also recognized in the discussions that we have been having and continue to have with the Environmental Board on how we want to address those two major topics. And many of the policies were pulled from the land use sustainability element, but they were still under, we had many discussions with the Environmental Board on how best to make amendments to what was already adopted before. For the arts and culture element, we primarily made amendments to guide the upcoming development of the art strategic plan and added policies to specifically address the creative arts district. For economic vitality, we made major updates concurrent with the development of the Economic Development Action Plan. This action plan was adopted earlier this year, and so the goals and policies are consistent with what was adopted by City Council. For the human services element, we primarily just updated what was consistent with the human services strategic plan that was adopted by City Council less than two years ago. And so we weren't proposing anything new than what was adopted in the strategic. For the parks element, we updated in alignment with the update to the, what was originally the park strategic plan. And we made name changes to now recognize the new name, which is the Park System Plan. We also made changes to identify the creeks and peaks concept, which is an expanded concept from the Green Necklace. For utilities, public services, and capital facilities, this has actually emerged of what was originally two different elements. And the reason for the merge is because we found that both elements actually had the same level of service standards identified in both. And so to reduce some of the confusion, we just merged it into one so that we could be more efficient with how we're tackling utilities, the needs for public services, and the needs on capital facilities in one element rather than in two. And we, similar to all the other elements, we reviewed the language with the utility system plans and consistency of terminology, particularly with the environment element. The appendices for the comprehensive plan contain all the analysis and data and information that we used in the development of this periodic update. And then timeline for the legislative process leading up to today, we started with public hearing on August 22nd with the Planning Policy Commission. They deliberated on the conference plan on September 12th. We then met with the Planning Development Environment Council Committee on September 9th, and the council committee deliberated on October 1st. The final recommendations that came from the Planning Policy Commission first included adding discussions in the land use element, updating the policy B6 in the land use element, and then adding environmental justice policy to the climate and environment element. One note from the Planning Policy Commission that we wanted to identify for City Council was that the attention of the Planning Policy Commission was primarily focused on goals and policies. So they just wanted to highlight, they didn't spend as much time on the introductions as they did on the goals and policies. With the Planning Development Environment Council Committee, they are recommended approval with final direction listed, which includes recognizing city history in the introduction, highlighting the commitment to the environment, including the 1993 values in the introduction, directly addressing the King County Affordable Housing Committee's recommendations, and being more specific on neighborhood character and spirit. This was terminology that we found in the conference of plan that just was too vague for what we were trying to achieve with the conference plan. So we just provided a little more information on what we meant in those sections. For next steps, the next step for the conference plan is coming back to City Council on December 2nd for tentative adoption. Your materials tonight include a matrix of changes, which identifies all the changes we made or are proposing for the periodic update, as well as the reasons we are making the change. Includes a public comment matrix, which contains all the virtual public comments staff received with staff responses. There is a document with list of all the meetings that were conducted in support of development of this periodic update. You also have a letter from the Environmental Board with their recommendations and highlights from this periodic update process. And staff also included a staff response table at the end of that letter. There's also a letter from the Planning Development Council Committee on their recommendations for the comprehensive plan amendments. There's the King County Affordable Housing Committee letter. There's the summary decision for the redesignation and rezone from the Hearing Examiner. We also included a executive summary for the environmental impact statement for the conference plan, primarily because the environmental impact, environmental impact statement isn't necessarily a document that council adopts, but it's more supplemental to this comprehensive plan. So we just want to identify what was in that in a summary document. You also have the draft coordinates for adoption of the comprehensive plan, and you have the draft comprehensive plan in multiple exhibits. So the administration recommends approval of the conference plan amendments as presented to City Council. So this brings me back to my direction needed slide. Does City Council have any additional amendments for the conference?
Excellent. I'm trying to remember at this point, do we get commentary from PD Chair or does that come after question and answer? Okay, fantastic. Chair Hunt, fill us in.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. There is a letter as one of the, one of several attachments with this item in our packet tonight that is a letter by myself on behalf of our council committee that reviewed this over the course of multiple meetings. I will preface this with Council President Walsh and Council Member Hall. If there's anything I missed, please, as always, let me know. And correct me if I mistake anything. We reviewed this over several meetings and as was mentioned in Stephen's update here, we focused on making sure that first of all, compliance was, was met. There are many, many requirements by different agencies that the comprehensive plan has to, has to clear. And so we wanted to make sure that we were meeting all of those requirements. We also focused on consistency with other plans. There have been many updates over the last several years to city, to city functional plans and things like the Issaquah Climate Action Plan, as well as the regional plans, the State Growth Management Act Regional Plan Vision 2050, and then King County Planning Policies. So all of those were considered and all of those policies were aligned within our comprehensive plan. Then there were many, multiple state laws that we reviewed. And I think for me, the focus here was there were state laws that we were required to consider certain things like emergency shelters and new targets for housing to meet housing, to increase the supply of housing for folks at different income levels, for example. And so for our committee, we focused on, these are state law requirements. How do we make sure that we're providing guidance? How do we make sure that we're providing guidance that's Isequa-specific to help future policymakers, to help the Planning Policy Commission guide us in how we can achieve the intent of these laws in a way that is specific to our circumstance here in Isequa? There was the emergency shelters one, which was HB 1220. There were also multiple missing middle housing bills that were passed, and we took those into account, how we can make sure that we achieve that goal of increasing the missing middle housing, which is in between large multifamily apartment buildings, but also not single detached family homes, so duplex, triplex, fourplex, and ADUs. And then additionally, we came into compliance early with HB 1181, which was the Climate Action Planning Provision. That is because of the great work of our volunteer commission and of our community and of staff and this council in adopting our Isequa Climate Action Plan and really set us up for being able to comply with that law early. We also complied with our various functional plans, including our Housing Strategy Action Plan, in addition to the multiple other functional plans across the city. In our last meeting, we also addressed terminology. While we do hearken back to the 1993 values, for example, we wanted to make sure that we were using modern terminology, that we were referring to community aesthetics, but recognizing that over time, our city is changing. And so wanting to make sure that we were recognizing that with the terminology that we used and that we were also using terminology that reflected the diversity and the growing diversity of our community. And then, as has been mentioned, we also reviewed it with an eye to readability, wanting to make sure that folks could access the information they wanted easily and quickly throughout the document, recognizing that most folks will be searching for the part of this very large document that they specifically want to key into. Few other notes, we did agree with the majority of policy changes recommended by the city advisory boards. One in particular was mentioned that I just wanted to note for council, which was land use B6, and that has to do with coming into agreement with our tree protection, I believe. But I did want to make sure that that was the one that we were talking about there. We recommended the majority of changes that the Planning Policy Commission recommended. We also included environmental board's feedback, especially about achieving a sustainable, high-quality natural environment and going above and beyond what is required to protect our natural environment, recognizing the importance of that in Isequa. We recommended enhancing the context around the plan, which has been reflected in multiple areas, adding more history, adding more context around, this is where we're going, but this is also where we have been as a city. And then, as I mentioned, making sure that as we address these things like the King County Affordable Housing Committee's recommendations, that we're including those in a way that is useful to current and future policymakers as we look to achieve these goals of increasing our affordable housing across the community. And all of that is summarized in the letter. We did have multiple meetings to review this, as well as the previous council presentation of this. And so would be happy to take any questions from any council members on our discussion. And also, again, if fellow colleagues on the committee would like to make any additions, happy to hear those as well.
I think you summarized it quite well, and we did the hard work. So hopefully, that comes through in the letter and all of the information. So I think at this point, do you want to put up the question again, just so that we have that? Really, at this point, we're looking for questions, and then we'll get back into feedback. So we'll start with Councilmember Hunt and then Councilmember Hall.
Yes, so I saw the flag on policy B6, and I wanted to make sure that that was explained. And I do believe that that has to do with recognizing trees in urban environments and those sorts of things, but I wanted to check in with you if that is the correct policy that we're referring to.
Yes, that's the correct policy.
Okay, thank you.
So you were just clarifying, and then you'll have comments later.
Yes, just because that one didn't have any explanation there.
Yes, fantastic. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you for writing the letter on our behalf. It was very comprehensive for the comprehensive plan, so I appreciate that. So to clarify, I thought the policy that we disagreed with PPC on had to do with economic vitality and underserved communities. So can you -- was -- help me. Sorry. Help me understand this other one, because I don't seem to remember.
That seems to be a typo on our part for the presentation. You are correct, it is economic vitality policy A1 that was discussed by the committee. And so the discussion on that one was whether or not to include basically the second half of that policy, which was a requirement from the regional staff to identify how we are providing services to small, locally, local, historically lack capital, represent underserved communities, and at risk of displacement. And so that was the discussion for Planning Policy Commission, whether or not to separate that out or not. I apologize for the typo there. You are correct, that was that one.
Okay, I'll look to the other members. Any other questions being brought up? Okay. So at this point, we have an opportunity for any members of the public that want to make comments on the comprehensive plan before we give into our feedback. So I'll just check in online. If you're on the smartphone or computer, you can use the raise hand icon or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, you can press star three. If you're in person, you can raise your hand, jump up and down, anything like that. We'll look for you. Is there anybody indicating a desire to speak?
We had a virtual attendee, Glenn Quadros, who had his hand up for quite some time. It's possible his comments related to another item. I'm going to check in with Glenn, if that's okay.
Great.
So Glenn, I've made you a panelist. If you do have some public comments to make tonight, you're welcome to do so now. Glenn, just checking in with you one last time. If you did indeed want to make some public comments tonight, you can unmute your microphone and do so now. Okay, so he is not unmuting, and just check here. I don't think anyone else virtually is indicating a desire to speak.
Well, we always appreciate that you're stepping above and beyond, monitoring people in between the process who might be indicating desire to speak. I will just take a moment to state that we receive a lot of emails on topics like this. So if somebody has comments that they want to make, citycouncil@isequawawa.gov will hit all seven of us, and we'll get a chance to hear your voice and respond. So turning back to council, you know, this is just a kind of touch point. We're not looking to adopt anything tonight, but I think the administration would like to know if there is any feedback needed, any amendments or adjustments that we are looking for on the comprehensive plan. So does anybody have any comments? Councilmember Hall?
No comments for changes or anything like that. I did just want to make sure to share some comments of thanks, even though I'm sure we'll be able to do that once we get to the final adoption. I just wanted to say, once again, excellent work. A significant amount of time and effort has gone into updating the strategic plan, especially after having just updated Title 18. So I hope very soon you all get to breathe that sigh of relief and take a vacation or something like that. Thanks again for writing the letter. I did just want to just say, I thought it was interesting how on the agenda, we have the strategic plan also, and it got me thinking about, well, if our strategic plan, which is our five-year vision, is, let's say, the paper atlas or something that you take out. The comprehensive plan is really the Google Maps, right? The all-out vision for what we want to do in our community, how we get the Isequa that's on paper that we always talk about to come to life. So I also just wanted to recognize the meaning of the work that you all have put in, and just thank you for your engagement, which will last much longer than our lifetimes here in Isequa. So again, thank you very much. I'm forward to adopting.
Fantastic. Well, I'll just jump in on that topic. I think, knock on wood, this has been a really smooth process, and a lot of that is because of the work that we had already done in our functional plans. A lot of that is because we had done the work on Title 18. So we're very familiar with the areas of our code that really needed to, you know, just have a reference in this. A lot of it is because of the hard work of our boards and commissions, who did the deep, deep dive on so many of these topic areas, and a ton of it is from just the darn hard work of our staff, who know our city and our code and our needs very well, and have done the work on this. I can also look back to previous comprehensive plans, and the fact that we did the work on the Regional Growth Center meant we didn't have some of the same difficult conversations that other communities had to have regarding, where are we going to upzone? We already know where that plan is for the city of Isequa, and so we were able to kind of roll that forward and continue just working on the customization of how do we adapt to all of the state requirements and all of the things that we needed to work into this and keep it, referring to Isequa, and keep it really helping us move that plan forward. So just wanted to throw in my appreciation. Do we have any other comments, feedback on this? I think you got a -- oh, okay. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I would just like to thank you, Council President Walsh, for your work on the Affordable Housing Committee. I know that as part of that work, you're reviewing the housing element for each and every King County, Kitsap County, Pierce County, and Snohomish County comprehensive plan. We only have to read one of them, but you've read the housing element for all of them, so thank you. The comments that came back from the Affordable Housing Committee were helpful to challenge us to a little bit more by saying, you know, you're doing a great job, but here's some other things to think about. And I appreciate the administration's guidance on how we are going to address those requests or those suggestions in the next generation of our housing analysis. Mr. Patel, I look forward to seeing that as we go forward as well. But just wanted to make sure that your work was not overlooked in that whole process. So thank you very much.
I appreciate that, though. I will say it's the King County Affordable Housing Committee, so we are only reviewing for the cities in King County, but yes, that is quite a lot.
My apologies. I mistook you for the PSRC.
Yes, there you go. There you go. But no, that has been a really good point of being able to pull in those elements, of making sure that housing at all levels of affordability is addressed. And I appreciate that the King County, let's see, King County CPPs, what is it? Thank you. Countywide planning policies. Just, I've heard that so many, so many times. You know, that was the first part of it, was adopting the fact that we had to, as cities, support that in our comprehensive plans. And so we're seeing that come through, and I think we got a gold star for our ability to address all of those elements. Not all of the cities have, so appreciate that from staff as well. Do you have everything that you need?
Yes, I do. And I do want to extend my own thanks to the planning team who supported and made sure that this project came out as successful as we see it as. Kristin Leeson, Senior Planner, who looked at our land use and housing and arts and culture, and Senior Transit Station Planner, Thomas Valdrecht, who's online listening in. He looked at the infrastructure, capital facilities, public services, and transportation. And then Associate Planner Valerie Porter looked at everything else. And so I want to make sure that I extend my thanks to them, because a lot of the hard work was done by them, and we have a great planning document because of the amount of effort that the entire team put into this. And so thank you for all the gratitude, but I also want to make sure they're recognized for their hard efforts as well.
Thanks, Stephen. Appreciate it. Thanks for passing it on. Okay, so that is one of three items on our agenda tonight. So the second item is COM 0072, the Citywide Strategic Plan Update, and this is going to be presented by Dale Markey Crimp, the Assistant to the City Administrator, because we don't like to do anything small on a night we're taking on all of the big things.
Good evening, City Council. Dale Markey Crimp, Assistant to the City Administrator, and I am thrilled to be here tonight, following on Stephen's coattails here. He stole a little bit of my thunder, but that's good, I think intentionally, to share the final proposed updates to the Our Isequa Strategic Plan. The purpose of this evening is to present the council with the final draft of the proposed updates to the Our Isequa Strategic Plan. As a reminder, this update focused on the plan's goal area, goal statements, objectives, and recommended actions. While the focus on those three elements did necessitate some minor updates to the opportunity and background in each goal area, it did not pertain to, and therefore did not consider, any updates to the mission, vision, guiding principles, nor any changes to the goal area categories themselves. This evening, the administration is requesting that the council review this final draft recommended update and make any final recommendations. Specifically, does the council agree with the policy direction outlined in the recommended update? And are there any additional revisions or additions that the council would like to see included in this final stage ahead of approval and adoption? My favorite slide, it's becoming one. I'm going to be sad when I don't have presentations that includes this slide. But as a refresher, and then for anyone in the audience who hasn't seen me present this slide before, our first Isequa strategic plan, the Our Isequa Strategic Plan, was adopted in 2019, following an 18-month community engagement process. Through that process, the plan was developed, and it provides leadership, both the administration and the city council, with a high-level policy direction reflected in the six goal areas, originally between one and five objectives per goal area, and a number of aligned potential actions for each objective. There was always a plan to revisit the plan after five years, and therefore, updating the strategic plan became one of Mayor Polly's top 2024 priorities. Early in this year, 2024, the mayor selected members to a community task force, three of whom are members of our city council and one of whom is in the audience this evening, to inform and to lead the strategic plan update. The task force met six times between late February of this year and late June of this year, first grounding themselves in the current plan, then developing recommended updates for the objectives in each goal area, and then working with city staff and our city staff subject matter experts to determine aligned actions for each of their new or refined objectives. It will come not as a surprise that many of the updates that Stephen discussed as updates to our comprehensive plan, those same trends are reflected in the updates to our strategic plan, which is exactly how it should be. The task force then is exactly how it should be. The task force then presented their recommendations to the city council on July 16th of this year. And at that presentation, you provided them with positive feedback on their recommendations and some very pointed, uh, feedback for the administration as we considered additional revisions moving forward. Specifically, you asked city staff to attend to the strategic plan prioritization criteria that exist within the plan document when making final revisions. In July and August, city staff reviewed the recommendations from the task force and considered them through the following lens: the level of impact and alignment to the goals and objectives, the likelihood of success, the ability for the city to control the actions outlined in the plan, the cost and the budget alignment, and the five-year time horizon. So really bringing this plan into its intended time horizon. The administration would like to take a quick moment here before we dive in, just to acknowledge the 15 members of the mayoral task force, including the three city council members, for their essential contributions to this project. This update is not just grounded in the task force work, but you'll see even after the staff revisions, the board and the board and commission engagement, and the additional public engagement, it still largely resembles what you saw in July. Also, I'd like to thank, um, and the administration would like to thank the over 40 board and commission members who attended a special meeting of board and commissions, making of, 10 of our, uh, board and commissions were represented at this meeting, to provide additional feedback in September, leading to the addition of a couple of new objectives, um, in this final recommendation. I don't have any words for this slide, just that I think it's important to see the photos of the people that did the work. Um, and it's also important to acknowledge, you can see peppered in here in little places, um, our city staff, who also provided invaluable knowledge as they were providing Stephen's team with feedback on the functional plans and the way that those feed into our comprehensive plan. They were also providing that same feedback to our task force members, to our board and commission members, as they fed feed, feed, feedback into this plan as well. So as I mentioned, the task force presented their recommendations to city council in July, and their recommendations were warmly received. And then you also provided specific feedback to the administration. The first was to ensure alignment between the strategic plan update and the city's comprehensive plan and functional plans, was also to bring the recommended actions within the time horizon, the five-year time horizon, and then also to ensure that the recommended actions within the plan could be expected to be financed through the city's budgets over the time horizon of the plan. And one thing you likely noticed, um, in the, the, uh, draft update presented tonight, is that there have been some changes made specifically with the budget in mind. In some cases, that leads, shows up as a more generalized action, so the mention of microtransit rather than any particular program. And in some cases, entire actions were removed or replaced within acknowledgement that we don't currently foresee. It's something within our budgetary or our fiscal, um, ability. So now the update. The proposed update differs from the original 2019 plan in the following ways. So the 2019 plan at a high level, six goal areas, 16 objectives. The task force presented recommendations, again, within those six goal areas, but with 20 objectives. And they specifically recommended new objectives within infrastructure, city leadership and services, and mobility. The final proposed update coming to you tonight has those same six goal areas, but also has two additional, um, so 22 objectives total, two added, one in environmental stewardship, and one in social and economic vitality. Before I dive into the specific objectives and some of the aligned actions, I, I want to return to a, what should be a familiar slide, which is the trends, um, represented in this proposed update. You'll notice this is very similar to the slide that the task force presented, and that's because not a whole lot has changed in terms of the trends of this update. Emergency preparedness, public safety, and community resilience is an overarching theme of the proposed update. While ref- it's reflected both in the brand-new emergency preparedness objective within city leadership and services, it's also reflected in a fleshed-out public safety objective. So while there was an added objective in 2021 around public safety, it had no specific actions. This update builds out specific actions aligned to that objective. Also, it's reflected in the fact that climate resilience and emergency preparedness show up across different goal areas. Not only do they have their own goal area, um, and their own objective, you'll also see elements of resilience and climate preparedness and emergency readiness reflected in infrastructure, social and economic vitality, and environmental stewardship. Which brings me to the second trend, continued investment in climate action and sustainability. This should come as no surprise. It was a huge headline of what Stephen shared about the comprehensive plan update. And so that is also reflected in here. Uh, the objectives in our environmental stewardship goal area have been expanded to truly align with the commitments we've made in our climate action plan. And you'll see there are additional success measures in that section as well, that align with the success measures in the Issaquah Climate Action Plan. Housing affordability and livability, again, another topic that came up in the elements of the comprehensive plan, that's also supported in the revisions and the added emphasis here in the update to the strategic plan. As documented in the 2023 Community Survey, livability, whether that's affordable housing, housing affordability, or amenities, the, um, this continues to be on the minds of our community, and an ongoing focus in growth and development and social and economic vitality. And last, but certainly not least, operationalizing equity. Equity is one of the guiding principles in the original strategic plan and is mentioned in the original, uh, city leadership and services, uh, goal area. This proposed objective, or this proposed update goes a step further and outlines very specific actions and the how of operationalizing that commitment. So what I'll do is I'd like to walk through each goal area and share with you high level some of the changes, um, and then also some of the aligned actions, especially if there's a brand-new objective. You'll notice on each slide and in, in your packet, that any, um, objective that is highlighted in gray, um, or is highlighted, um, that connotes a new objective, or an objective that changed significantly from the 2019 plan. So the 2019 plan for mobility, there were three objectives. We're proposing four objectives for this update. We made a significant rewrite to the first one with a focus on multimodal transportation, which was not a focus in the 2019 plan, with a, with a feeling that multimodal transportation and investments there are needed to alleviate congestion and also so the, the reliance on solo vehicle travel. This shows up in particular actions of incentivizing electric vehicle infrastructure, evaluating trail and road connectivity, and also implementation of the intelligent transportation system. The second objective is, is nearly the exact same. Uh, we still think it is incredibly valuable to keep a focus on near-term connections and efficiencies. The third objective is a new recommended objective focusing on safe systems in road design. So specifically, this started originally as a, as the idea of Vision Zero. So the idea of eliminating, um, all pedestrian bike fatalities and collisions with cars. Uh, the administration feels that taking the more general language of safe systems, rather than committing to something like Vision Zero, um, provides us some flexibility in exactly how we do that. But as you look at the actions within the objective, you'll see that they align very closely to any Vision Zero plan that you look at. So a redesign, uh, or a commitment to road redesign to increase safety on our streets. And then the last objective here, um, is focused on establishing the foundation for future light rail. This is a, an update of the light rail objective that existed in the 2019 plan. For growth and development, um, there are four objectives recommended in this update, um, and they are the four objectives with minor changes, um, from the original plan. The first is probably the most notable change in language, and I will say that is a trend of these updates. A lot of them are an update in the language. They're not necessarily an update in the spirit, maybe of the objective, but bringing that objective into the current day. Stephen talked a little bit about how the, the language, um, in the values around land use have been revisited in the comprehensive plan. The task force recommended that we revisit some of the language in the land, the growth and development or land use section of this plan. And this updated, um, objective reflects that updated language. The second objective is largely the same, again, with some very small language updates and some changes to actions. Specifically, um, the actions to achieve balanced growth have been updated in this plan. The third objective is largely the same. The actions are largely the same. And the fourth objective reflects a shift from a focus on near-term livability, so a focus on amenities, to a focus on long-term livability, a focus on climate resilience and proximity to mobility options. And so you can see, that's again where that trend in community resilience, um, and climate shows up outside of just, um, the environmental stewardship goal area. Speaking of environmental stewardship, that is the next goal area. Uh, this goal area originally had three objectives. The proposed update has four objectives, with this first objective being the most notable, um, change. It was recommended by the boards and commissions that an objective focused on sustainable processes and approach to project and program management be part of this update. It's the how we get to, um, how we get to doing the work that we'd like to commit to. So seeing a change in how we do our work, not just what we've committed to doing. Objective two reflects an even more bold stance on the city as a regional leader in climate action and commitment to making progress on targets outlined in our Issaquah Climate Action Plan. Objective three is nearly the same language as our original 2019 plan. And objective four, which is similar to the old objective three around land acquisition, but a focus on acquisition that provides community benefit and ecosystem benefit. So again, aligning with the park system plan update, but also aligning with our commitment to climate mitigation. The social and economic vitality, uh, goal area, the 2019 plan originally had three objectives. This update is proposing four objectives, and the last objective, um, is the most notable, uh, change. I will get there. It will be the last one I get to on this slide. The first objective remains similar with a focus on business recruitment and retention for living wage jobs. The second is again similar, more specific actions on how the city can attempt to build and expand partnerships that, uh, increase affordable housing and housing affordability. The third objective is, the language is exactly the same, and similar to what Stephen mentioned about the update, uh, to the comprehensive plan, this is reflect, the actions reflect the human services strategic plan, um, and is so an update in line with that functional plan. This newly added fourth objective came as a combination of feedback received from, uh, city council in July around thinking about, um, the loneliness epidemic and the need to emphasize human and community connections, and also feedback we received from boards and commissions, specifically around the pride in our arts and our public spaces. And so really thinking about how can our public spaces and our spaces where we have public art be thought of as assets to the community and potential places to foster connection. For our city leadership and services goal area, the original plan had two objectives in 2019. In 2021, that was increased to three objectives with the addition of the public safety objective. This plan is recommending four objectives. The first two objectives are revisions to two key concepts: civic engagement and efficient, effective, and equitable services. The original two objectives essentially touched on those two themes as well. This is just a rewritten, updated version of those two elements. What I will say is you can see the most significant change in the plan is the clarity and specificity of the actions that the task force and boards and commissions recommended to help the city make progress in these areas. Objective three was added in 2021. No language was changed to the objective, but it was reaffirmed here in this update, and potential actions focused on community policing, community court, and enhanced, um, behavioral health support have all been outlined as potential actions. And then objective four, which is a new, uh, objective for this goal area, uh, which elevates the priority of emergency management and emergency preparedness in the community. So preparing the city as an organization, preparing our Issaquah community, and responding to and recovering from any future emergency. While the city has always maintained processes and practices for emergencies, the increased focus on preparation is paramount, and that was reflected in the conversations that the, uh, task force had. And then last, but certainly not least, and I know, uh, our task force members that presented on infrastructure would be sad that it came at the end, but I thought for continuity with the plan, we would go in that order. Um, so certainly not, you know, last in order, not last in our hearts. Objective one for infrastructure remains largely the ta- the same. There were some small changes to language, and specifically some small changes to the language within the actions. A lot of feedback we got from boards and commissions when we brought the draft to them was that they didn't just, they just didn't understand some of the language. And so we wanted to make it really clear, uh, what those actions meant. And then the addition of the second objective, as I mentioned at the top, resilience, um, infrastructure resilience, emergency preparedness is an important trend in this update, and that's reflected in this new objective within this section. So, the 2019 plan, um, two to four measures per goal area, uh, generally aligned to the, I should say, success measures. This, I would say, is one of the most notable changes you probably noticed as you read through. In the original plan, each goal area had a few success measures at the bottom. Um, in 2020, the city council adopted a performance measurement plan that sought to expand, uh, the number of measures, including those success measures, to things that we could track in an ongoing way, to be able to report out on the progress we were making. What we're proposing in this update is that success measures live in alignment with each objective. So that instead of just getting an update on whether an action has been taken, we're also able to track over time if we're making progress on each objective. Um, and so you'll see that in some cases, uh, there's an, I should say, none of the success measures have gone away. It is actually just a combination of what we are already tracking and a few additional measures that staff said, hey, I already track this, and this would let you know if we're making progress on this objective. It's what I'm using to know if we're making progress on this objective. And so it's a combination of the original success measures, our performance measurement plan, and a handful of additional measures. Um, and so that is probably one of the, the most notable changes that you'll see. It's not one to four at the end of a goal area, but, except, with the exception of one, uh, objective, at least one performance measure aligned to each objective. So, um, as I wrap up, uh, and I promise I'll pause for questions here in a moment, the final proposal in front of you, um, this evening is a culmination of a number of decision points and various options considered and choices made along, on each of the following, uh, points in this process. The task force considered a variety of, of objectives and their alignment to different goal areas. City staff worked to bring those task force recommendations into the framework for the strategic plan prioritization, which is outlined in the 2019 plan. Board and commission members added additional objectives and actions. Um, and we also received additional public feedback, which is what outlined in one of the attachments today. Um, while a lot of that feedback was largely positive and then focused on implementation level, so not even action level, but when you do this action, I would like you to think about this. Um, and so we're going to keep, uh, that feedback for when we get to the implementation of some of those actions. The recommendation tonight, um, is that the council, um, we're recommending the approval and adoption of the update to the plan at the December 2nd meeting. And so, um, what that will look like is after tonight's conversation, any additional necessary feedback will be incorporated and will return to city council on December 2nd to hopefully approve and adopt. And that will set the staff up to prepare for implementation and tracking starting in Q1 of 2025. Direction for tonight, specifically, do you agree with the policy direction reflected in these revisions? And are there any additional revisions the council would like to see included at this final stage of the process?
Is that it, Dale? Just that?
That's it, just that.
That's good. That was just a little bit. Okay. Okay, council question and answers. Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Madam Council President. A couple of questions. Can you go back to ES1 for a second?
Absolutely.
I just don't understand it. Or maybe I just don't understand how it relates to environmental.
Yes, so the recommendation here is a focus on sustainable project management practices. So not just that sustainability itself is the only team really thinking about the implementation of green infrastructure or sustainable processes in their project management, but it's something that they're going to lead and see from teams across the city. So I think what you've seen in some of the actions outlined below is sort of training for staff on how to think about their projects through the lens of sustainability.
Can you give an example?
I cannot, personally. I have not gone through the training.
Sustainable program management. Can you even just define that phrase for me?
The way that I understand it is, in the same way that we might think about equitable, like an equity lens, equitable program or project design, equitable program management, it'd be the same idea, but through the lens of sustainability.
Well, equity and the lens of equity, but then you said equitable program management, and I would be as lost on equitable program management as I would be on sustainable program management.
Totally fair. I think that's part of the reason why we're, the board, the environmental board and the sustainability team felt strongly about adding this in, is that it's not something that we know how to do. It's not something that every team is, what's the word I'm looking for, is fluent in.
I've just, I mean, I've done a lot of program management, both professionally and here on, and council, and I've just never seen sustainable program management before. You're just, I understand each of those three words individually, but you put them together in this combination, and I don't know what they mean. So can I ask that someone come back with a slide to explain that?
Absolutely.
Before we, you know, honor before the beginning of December?
City Administrator?
And I would also, and thank you, Councilmember Marts. I would also direct the council to the potential actions on page 518 of the packet. I think that helps a little bit. It talks about developing sustainable infrastructure policy, and track project alignment to that policy, evaluate new plans, policies, and codes with existing environmental plans to identify gaps and vulnerabilities, environmental and climate projects and programs, completing an after-action review to assess progress toward goals and objectives, and identify recommendations for improvement, and to train staff in sustainable processes and environmental design to support climate and sustainability goals. So hopefully that's a little bit more information, and certainly when we come back on December 2, we'll ask, Mrs. Spence, entry to, um, and.
Total. Yep.
Thank you. And I did have a second question.
Yeah.
You said in all but one of these, you had two or more metrics. What was the one where you didn't have two or more metrics? And do you have at least one good metric?
The very last objective in, the new objective in infrastructure. And so we have the other infrastructure performance measures that we feel strongly about and feel as though they are good indicators. We've not landed on something that we think totally helps a, a non-action completed performance measure that we think gives us a good indication of our progress on that very, here, and I'll bring this one up, on that very last objective.
Oh, I can, I, I mean, I could offer you one right now.
Would be great.
Which is no more than, take a number of hours of downtime for major city systems per year, right? You could say no more than three hours of downtime per year, or one hour of downtime, or be like Amazon and say no more than five minutes of downtime per year. I mean, it's whatever a number that would be reasonable because that, that would allow you to, to set a goal, and then you could spend your electronic systems and your processes and all that, you could, you could parse out the, you could budget basically how much per year you would expect of downtime in each of those areas and add it up to whether it hits your number or not, right? But I would love to see like our, you know, flows not more than two days down per year, right? Or our number like that, but that, that would be, that would be a way to measure this, this one.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, I will look on then. We have a moment for public comment and see if there's anyone in the room or online who would indicate a desire to speak on the strategic plan update. And so anyone online, just raising your virtual hand, sending a host chat message if you're on the phone, star three, or in person, you can jump up and down, wave your hands. Okay. Looking like nothing. Okay, then we will go into feedback. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Specific piece of feedback, because I think for the most part thrilled with the revisions that we see here. I mean, that's basically what you heard last time too, from the council, and thankful for the process and people who contributed to the process again. I came prepared to talk about how I think it was a missed opportunity to not have stuff about the epidemic of loneliness and isolation, and then you spoke to it as part of that new objective. And I think that's telling for me that I didn't pick that. I didn't clock that with that one. So I think that needs a little bit more of a tweak. It's, it's almost, I mean, you, you bring up connecting community members in the objective, which is good, but it doesn't, it doesn't really live in the potential actions or the success measures, although it does talk about the number of people attending arts and culture events, which gets at that kind of in a roundabout way. I guess my ask before we come back on this next is if we could have, we could chew on this a little bit more. There is a city partner, community partner up in the Highlands, Lindsay Pinkston, with the Highlands Council, who's been living and breathing this kind of work ever since the U.S. Surgeon General's warning has come out, who I think would just be a good person to connect with and say, hey, what do you think about, how do we best align this? And acknowledging that staff already went through the strategic plan with a lens on budget, I'm not necessarily saying that we need to have brand-new action items or anything like that, but perhaps finding ways to use language in a way where it's easily recognizable that, okay, this objective helps to solve this problem that exists in the community. But again, thank you for, for hearing that from the last meeting. I really appreciate it, and everything else looks great to me.
Great. Any other feedback, comments? Deputy Council President De Michele?
Yes, I'll just be very brief. I just, again, another great body of work. We're really seeing tonight the culmination of a lot of hard work by our staff and our community. So thanks for our community members that were also involved. And I just want to thank you for that addition of the arts and acknowledgement of their importance in our community. And the, the other goal that was also added, I think is very important as well. So I think good listening, good work, and I'm very appreciative of the work that's been done. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Marts?
Thank you. I think what's most important in here was what you said on, you have me page 546. I don't know what it corresponds to, under your, under your original 2019 success measures versus your 2024 updated success measures. And where you talked about aligned to objective in order to provide more information about progress on individual objectives. This has been a persistent concern of mine, is that we define goals and metrics, and then we don't revisit them often enough. This is in engineering called having a closed-loop system versus an open-loop system, right? And so I'm thrilled that that is an important part of our plan, and I look forward to seeing these measures, both the existing measures and the new measures, as functions over time to understand how we're actually making progress against them. So that's the part that, what I heard about today that I'm most excited about, and I think will bear fruit for us and the council and also for the public about how we're doing against this.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Council President Walsh. I was on the committee that did the deep dive with our awesome volunteer commission members and community members, and I had the opportunity to focus on a couple areas because the way we worked was, we all had the opportunity to go around to all of the areas, but we had detailed focus time on specific areas. And one of the ones that I focused on was infrastructure, which we really didn't have as much time in the 2019 update to work on. And so one of the, one of the really notable improvements, I think, this time was, we added one objective, but we also spent a lot more time, and also spent a lot more time with the other focus areas, kind of including it throughout the entire process and considering it throughout the entire process. As, as part of that, I really appreciated Councilmember Marts' earlier questions about the sustainable projects. In the infrastructure focus area, we have this, we have actions about minimizing carbon impact, we have actions about preserving and enhancing the city's resilient water supply. And I think for, for future policymakers and for people looking at the strategic plan for guidance, it would be really helpful to kind of give more information about what do we mean by sustainable projects, because we encountered that when we were, we were trying to think through in the infrastructure section, how do we make these, how do we make our infrastructure sustainable? What does that mean? What are the actions associated with that? And we had staff help, and they, they really supported us in devising these actions that we have in the plan at the same time as we grow as a city, as we have more capital projects, as we look to new facilities, et cetera. Having that guidance more accessible to more community members can only be better, right? So I appreciate that. The other thing I think was really important was the five-year time horizon and really focusing on that, that gave us a really good framework to work within bounds to consider which actions. And now that we've seen five years play out, we have a much better sense of these are the things that are realistic, these are the things that are helpful for us also to have on our, on our five-year plan. So I think that was good. My only other comment, and I leave it to you for how to document this, but we do, throughout the, throughout this process, we've had a number of lessons learned due to things that have happened over the last five years, including the COVID pandemic and then the economic impacts of the COVID pandemic. And as part of that, I think also really recognizing the loneliness, that's also, in my mind, a component of that as well, recognizing the importance of human services for our community when, when folks are experiencing economic hardship. That was another, another important thing that happens over the five years that we were able to address with that hindsight in this update. And so I was thinking, if somebody new to the process comes and sees, you know, this stuff about the loneliness epidemic, for example, they might not have that context. And so I thought it might be helpful to explain that it was something that came up also in the context of public safety and that emphasis there, emergency preparedness. You know, those were all lessons learned in large part through that pandemic and those, and those years after the pandemic. And so I think in, in our process, that was a big part of it, and I don't, you don't see the word COVID anywhere, and I think that's appropriate, but at the same time, I think for our documentation of the process and for the next group that looks at the next update and people looking to this for guidance of why did we change certain things, I thought that documentation of that in our thought process might be, might be helpful. Again, this was a really, really thorough process. We had so many community voices. I think this end product really reflects all of those community voices, and I'm very, will be very supportive of adopting this when it comes back.
Any other comments? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I would just like to thank Councilmember Hunt and Councilmember Marts and Council President Walsh for signing up to help with this process. You attended seven extra meetings over a six-month period, and we're all very busy, and yet you found time to go that extra mile and do those extra meetings. So thank you so much. I'd like to talk a little bit about the loneliness issue, but as it relates to city leadership and services, I, I really think you're doing a great job in measuring our, you know, number of tree acres preserved and all the metrics that you've done on, on the website, and that's fantastic work. When we talk about city leadership and services, you're talking about how we reestablish connection and community and cultural awareness in our community, and it's a little bit, bit more difficult to, to measure and to track, right? In terms of, you could have a certain number of meetings that we, we had that reached out to the Asian-American community or the Hispanic community, but that really doesn't tell the, the depth of our connection, the way that we're actually building community, the way that city leadership is actually connecting with the community to know what they really need. And I think that if, as we look at this particular section, it's going to be more difficult to measure, but we can feel it in our hearts and souls, so to speak. When I'm making a connection with people in, in another community that I may not have a, a strong connection or history with, I'm feeling that in terms of my connection to the community, my buy-in to what we're doing here in the city, and my sense of belonging. So I don't know how you can track those things, but I think it's so important after the pandemic and after the election that we had, the national people and the Senate and House members on the national level can't come to our door and talk to us. But those of us here on this council can make an effort to go to a number of doors and talk to our peers and our neighbors face-to-face. And we need to, we need to reestablish that connection and sense of civics as we're going to be challenged to the community as we become more and more kind of pushed apart along the way. So anything that you can do to measure that, to give us a sense that we're coming closer together as a community, or we're going farther apart as a community, so that we on the council can, as leaders, step in or pat ourselves on the back or take additional measures will be, will be very helpful as we go forward. So I know it's not a metric you can measure, but I hope it's something that you can keep in mind.
It's definitely something that we can look into, especially, we're just in the early stages of our 2025 biennial community survey. I think we've, we've asked questions that have touched on that, but not quite to the heart of what you're saying, and so something to consider as we explore that upcoming opportunity.
Any other comments? Okay, I will take my turn. I've got a few specific comments. In the growth and development area, oh, okay, before I dive into the details, I'm just going to start by saying, like Councilmember Hall said, I'm just thrilled with this update. I think this takes us absolutely forward. It's a gargantuan effort. And really thinking back into the strategic plan task force, the difference that they made in six or seven meetings, whereas the original plan took 18 months, is just huge. And so I really feel like this update just feels very, very focused and helpful, and I appreciate all of your help in just continually pushing it to be useful. That's very helpful. I heard what Councilmember Hunt said about kind of documenting things. I think it sounds like that would be much like we do with a budget council letter or something. I think that concept of recognizing what are the changes and the differences between when the plan was adopted previously and now, and really talking through the process would be great, not only because of what has happened in the world, but the way that you brought us through that update task force was really helpful, and I would love to document that. So that would be great. Few specific comments. In the growth and development area, the opportunity section, the third sentence reads, "In the face of this growth, Issaquah has chosen to direct development to the valley floor to protect existing neighborhoods and our forested hillsides and plan for growth around a future light rail station." I agree with all of that except for the protecting existing neighborhoods. I think we specifically mentioned in the first objective that neighborhoods will be, will, neighborhoods continue to be known for their unique aesthetic experience reflected in both the built environment and natural surroundings while responsibly accommodating additional housing and services throughout the city. So rather than disagree with ourselves between the objective, I just think it's really important for us to recognize that neighborhoods throughout time have been meant to change and adjust and grow. and grow to provide the services that communities need. So I would specifically like to remove that part about protecting existing neighborhoods. And then, growth and development, I think it's GD3, though looking over the draft, it doesn't have the numbers on it. The one related to infrastructure, at least in your draft here, the success measure there is total housing units by type. I think that might be a typo, because that doesn't seem to be related to that. And it doesn't relate to the success measures that were in the original plan. So the objective is, "Infrastructure is planned in anticipation of future growth, leveraging development and incorporating innovative, sustainable, and resilient design." Obviously, that is supposed to be responsive to housing units, but I would think that the success measures would be based on infrastructure and how we address that. So I'd like to just have you check into that and see if that was meant or otherwise. And then, Councilmember Martz mentioned the ES1 phrasing, and I have to agree. I, I think the concept and the way that you explained it verbally helped me understand what is meant by that. But I think either by talking about it as a sustainability lens or something with, that adopts sustainability practices across departments and creating a less centralized, you know, focus around sustainability, I think that would help create the concept that you're doing more than saying sustainable program and project management. So I would just like us to look at rewording that. And then, what Councilmember Hall and Councilmember Joe said about the loneliness epidemic, I'd love to see how we can specifically mention that, because I think that does speak to the moment in time that we are in. So generally, I just think this is fantastic. I think there's just a few tweaks, but gosh, the difference between what we even saw in July, when it had already gone through a bunch of work, and then to streamline down to this, I think is fantastic. Councilmember Martz?
I, I just want to build a little bit about, on what you were talking about in terms of sustainability. And I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to play the old-timer card here for a second and say that when I started on council, we had every bill that came forward, we had a, how is this sustainable and what is the sustainability aspect to this? And we divided it into three areas, right? Economic sustainability, social sustainability, and environmental sustainability. And so, I don't, I don't suggest we go back to that, but I suggest we, we talk to some of the old-timers who are around, because we don't do that anymore, right? And there is some reason why we don't do it anymore. So what, when I hear about this, I hear some, you know, if there's, we have applied the sustainability lens to everything in the past, what worked and what didn't, what did we learn from that and how can that inform this?
Excellent. Okay. Any other feedback for the administration? Councilmember Hunt?
I will plus-one the aligning with our actions on removing the protection, because we actually specifically are removing that item because we wanted to enhance aesthetics and make sure that we're also welcoming growth. So I wanted to plus-one that.
Excellent. Okay. Just a little bit of feedback for you, but moving forward, do you have everything you need?
I do. Thank you very much. Excited to be back in December.
Indeed. Okay. Item two out of three. Do we want to take a five-minute break? See, and a few nods for five-minute break during setup. And we're going to be providing a lot more information on the fleet fund. There seem to be a lot of questions about fleet and how the city manages our fleet, so we'll be providing a lot more information about that this evening. Another direction that we seek from council tonight is on the light rail study. We heard some concerns and questions over light rail, so we've come back with a reduced scope. We've, the original request was for $400,000, so what we're proposing is to fund it on a reduced level for $200,000, and we'll talk through what we believe we can accomplish with that level of funding. And then also, we've heard a lot of comments about the Downtown Issaquah Association this evening, and I know council has received comments over email about the Downtown Issaquah Association. So we are proposing to fund DIA $93,900 in 2025 and $68,232 in 2026. And we'll talk a little more specifics about that funding proposal. And then, also, the final direction that we seek is whether council feels comfortable in adopting the budget on December 2nd instead of what we've been discussing on December 9th. And if there's concerns and desire for more budget conversations and deliberations, we can certainly have that time anticipated on December 9th, but if there's not a lot of concerns raised by council, then perhaps we can adopt it on December 2nd. So first, I want to take a bit of a step back and talk about what we've, the process of getting us here today. So we had our August forecast, we discussed a little bit about that forecast at the city council retreat back in July. We, and every step of the way, we find out more information, we provide more information, we go into more detail. At the preliminary budget, which was really just a budget on a page, very general, proposed budget, and every step along the way, there are some changes that occur. So we're in this space between the proposed budget and the adopted budget. I bring this up because as we have looked at the proposed budget, we have a few corrections to make. Corrections are really common. Some of these corrections happen through this deliberations process with council saying we want you to make a couple of adjustments to the budget and some changes. Other corrections we find along the way as we look and make sure that the budget document reflects what's in our budgeting software, for example. So we find some corrections along the way that happens with every budget process. This year is no different. Some of the corrections that we've already found and would like to put into the adopted budget include EBSKA. If you recall, the city was part of a partnership for police radios and emergency radios. That partnership has dissolved. We're going to get some of that capital investment back. We hadn't known about the timing of that until after the proposed budget was published. So we're going to like to put that into the corrected, adopted draft of the budget. Also, we calculated utility tax for utility tax proposal, but we left out Sam Platt's water customers as part of that, so want to add that back into the budget. So those are just some examples of the types of corrections that we've found since the proposed budget was published. We also have some expenses, for example, street sweeping. We are pushing all of the streetsweeping expenses to the stormwater fund instead of general fund. And the reasons for that is that our stormwater license essentially from the state really requires much more street sweeping to occur because of the stormwater utility and considers our streets and roadways as part of the stormwater utility. So because of those stormwater regulations from the state, street sweeping has really become an integral part of that stormwater maintenance activity. So we should assign those to the stormwater fund. And there's also some pass-throughs that we had forgotten, revenue that maybe we're not really collecting, but just kind of passed through the city. So these are just examples of some of the types of corrections that we found that would will be in the draft for the adopted budget. And I'm bringing these up now because some of these corrections help provide funding for the proposed additions that we're going to be discussing in the rest of the presentation. So we've been talking about our budget is really tight, we've been making lots and lots of reductions, but because of these corrections, we have been able to propose additional funding to some of these categories tonight. So I wanted to make sure to bring those up quickly before we get into the bigger proposals. So as I said, the administration is proposing funding Metro Flex, that's $262,000 for the year of 2025. That would fulfill our contract. In the meanwhile, we would continue to search for other funding sources. We mentioned a grant that we'd applied for, and maybe there's other partnerships that we need to examine as well. So $50,000 of this funding would come from the general fund, $50,000 would come from the fleet fund, and then the remaining from the street operating fund balance. The impacts of this, as we think about, are pretty minimal to the fleet fund and general fund because, again, some of those corrections that I just discussed, $162,000 from the street operating fund balance, we don't anticipate to affect our street operations activities unless there are major storm events. That's what we usually like to have that fund balance for, a healthy fund balance for that fund, in case there's extra snow that we hadn't anticipated, et cetera. So if we get to that, if that does occur in the next biennium, then what we would do is we would look at general fund to help supplement and provide for that emergency-type response. And at this point, I'd like to welcome Autumn Monahan, Administrative Services Director, up to give a lot more information about the fleet fund.
Thank you. Again, my name is Autumn Monahan, Administrative Services Director, and my department includes fleet. As Mayor Polly mentioned last week at your last meeting, we have significant deferred maintenance needs at the city, both in facilities, which I've been talking about now for a while, and in fleet, that we're really working to address in this proposed budget. So really, we're trying to play some catch-up. We're really thankful to have some outside sources as consultant help, and we had their facility study. We also had a fleet study that was done by Matrix Consulting Group back in 2023 that helped us assess the challenges and then create plans moving forward. So Matrix fulfilled its study in 2023 and came back with a series of recommendations, which we're working on. As a start, we have started purchasing some electric vehicles, installing charging stations, working really hard on improving customer service with departments and having more connections with our customers, creating some more internal policies that help them provide smart structure around our program, and then upgrades to our software, which helps us in making more data-driven decision-making when it comes to fleet. As I mentioned last week, the study also found that about a half of our motorized fleet in 2023 was older than its recommended life cycle. So we're here now with budget requests to really start addressing those deficiencies. So I shared a chart last week that showed a couple different, you know, options for addressing replacement vehicles. The goal is a leveled replacement plan, right? One that we don't have a lot of peaks and valleys in budgets year over to year for replacements. And that's what the study recommends. That said, we have significant investment needs now in fleet, and that's due to many factors. And so here's a few. The first is many expensive vehicles are all up at the same time to be replaced and that have further age since 2023 and really do need some attention. In addition, there's an increased focus on infrastructure maintenance now at the city. We're also doing a lot more specialized work that requires certain types of equipment. Supply challenges in the past several years have been very, very challenging as far as even being able to purchase vehicles and equipment, so we have a backlog as we're working toward actually making those purchases. Police patrol vehicles are more likely now used as take-home vehicles as part of a pilot program. That shortens the life cycle of our patrol vehicles significantly, and so that's also changed. There are newer models for several types of vehicles and equipment that would provide substantial efficiencies and safety enhancements for our field staff. And then finally, further investment in EVs can increase upfront costs. So in your packet...
Autumn, before you move on, we've got a question, Councilmember Hunt.
Why does taking the vehicles home substantially reduce their life cycle?
Because oftentimes, police officers, vehicles are being used 24/7, so whether they're used to be taken home or they're being used in the field, they're constantly running. So we don't have, we didn't add an extra, you know, several vehicles that were just for take-home. The patrol vehicles that are being used are also being used for take-home, if that makes sense.
No, I'm sorry. Because they're getting, before, right, they were getting driven a certain amount per day, but a lot, right? Because they're going out on patrol, then you're just adding the commute time to and from, but aren't they getting driven like four or six hours or eight hours a day as part of patrol? And then the amount that gets added to that to just drive it home seems a small addition compared to the amount of part of their operational...
It does add a significant amount of mileage, just depending on where our police officers live. A lot of them don't live locally, and so there is a significant amount of mileage in just driving to and from. If you would have anything to add, Kelly, on that. This is Kelly Cusman, our fleet manager.
Good evening, and Kelly Cusman, Fleet Manager. We don't have specific data on exactly where the vehicles are going home to, but initial data or collection when we started looking at pilot program suggested that we patrolled about 25 miles a day. When they districted the city a little bit, that mileage shrunk on those vehicles, and then we're looking at somewhere about that same amount of mileage each way for transportation alone. But we kind of went from about a six-year replacement cycle to about a four.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's really indicative of where our police officers live, too, in seeing that. So in your packet is the full list of the proposed vehicles for the budget. I pulled out a few just as some examples, not having to go through the full list tonight, but to show you just some of the needs that are included in the budget. So to start off, some extremely old generators from 1972 and 1983 that have low electrical capacity, a flatbed truck from 1986 in the Streets Division that has some worsening mechanical condition and limited parts availability just due to its age, a one-ton dump truck in Parks Operations from 1992, a backhoe loader from 2008 in the Water Division that's showing some extreme wear, a Jet Vac heavy-duty truck with worsening mechanical issues from 2009, a transit bus used by the Senior Center from 2010 that is not ADA accessible and is hindering some just operations there. And then, as mentioned, patrol vehicles used for the take-home program aged in 2019 and 2022 would already be up for replacement in this proposed budget. With that, I'm here to answer any questions on...
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. My understanding is that there are some cities that have a police patrol take-home program where they're using a different vehicle to take home than the police vehicle. Police vehicles have a lot of special equipment and are more expensive than a lot of other vehicles, and so I wondered if that was considered in the budget and if we could see the results of that consideration.
City Administrator?
Councilmember Hunt, thank you for the question, because I just got a text from Stephanie Johnson, our HR Director, which directly addresses your question. And Stephanie writes, "Remind us that in order to be eligible for take-home program, employees must live within a straight-line distance of 50 miles from the city. If the employee lives outside of this boundary, he or she must park the take-home vehicle at a secure location such as a police or fire station within a straight-line distance of 50 miles from the city." So that is our version of that at a 50-mile...
Thank you for that. I do think that my question, so I believe there are some cities where they have a whole different car, it's not a police vehicle, that they get into the separate car, they take that home to and from work, and so that would be my question, because we're seeing the two years, you know, we're seeing more wear on the vehicles as a result of this program and reducing those versus if it were a different car that was less expensive. And I have heard from other cities that they still allow their officers this benefit, taking home the cars, but it's not the police patrol cars. But thank you for the additional information about the distance from the city.
And we have had those discussions as well. We don't have a police chief with us this evening, but in discussions with Chief Shuan, she believes there is a value to them having that police vehicle for emergency response. You know, the idea that if everyone has a police vehicle and there is an emergency, we then have the value of police officers who live near us who may work from other jurisdictions and vice versa. So we have explored the idea of a take-home sedan, but Autumn, fill in any blanks from that. But certainly, we have had those discussions, and I think the value that Chief Shuan feels and other police chiefs feel that in the case of an emergency, then those officers have an additional flexibility and ability to support wherever they may happen to be. That's good for the reason.
And whether they're marked cars or not for take-home, that would require just funding. And the budget that we're proposing is really focused on replacement of existing at the moment, along with all the additions are really funded by utility funds, but there's no new vehicles that really can be afforded by the general fund in adding on to our fleet at this point.
Okay, any other questions coming up on fleet right now? I know there was a question related, that a community member had mentioned, related to pervious surface and a vehicle in the fleet plan that was like $3.5 million related to pervious surface cleaning. I'm not sure if that, I don't think that's in this 2025-2026, so maybe that's just something that you can get back to us with information on?
Sure.
That would be great. And then the other question I would have, the transit bus for the Senior Center. I know the county has a lot of programs with vans that potentially could be available. Have we looked into any opportunities like that that could potentially serve our needs?
I do know our Parks and Community Services Department has been active in seeking those grants, and I know they have been watching. I don't have any updates at the moment if there's any availability, but we can look into that for sure.
Or even the King County vans that they have, that they give away after they're done using them.
And I think the challenge, anytime an agency is giving away a vehicle that they deem no longer fills their needs, then there's often additional maintenance costs that come along with that. So, again, I think we try to be as smart as this, you know, things that are free rarely are free.
Yeah, I just want to be smart with a $208,000 purchase of a transit bus, though, as well. Any other questions on fleet? Okay.
Thank you, Autumn.
Other proposed changes include funding the light rail study. So it would be partial funding of the light rail study. As you recall, the original request was for $400,000, and instead, we're proposing a reduced scope. That reduced scope would, the main deliverable would be to develop locally-preferred station locations and alignment options to inform and streamline the planning for sound transit. So we'd be able to use a consultant team to help us with that for the $200,000. We'd take a lot more of the work in-house under this proposal, so that means that Issaquah staff would lead on the public engagement and evaluation activities to reduce project costs as well. It does delay in identifying and updating the municipal code or zoning as needed, so that was an analysis that we'd have to take out at this time and postpone for future years. And finally, I'm sorry, was there a question?
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Quick one around the light rail study, thank you. If I, I don't actually remember this being a huge priority in our discussion last week. In fact, I think there were a couple of us that even said waiting might be, might be a good thing. So I guess I'm curious what the administration's thinking was here, because I suppose this, so this is all general fund, a new, new general fund revenue that we've identified. This also could have been used for other priorities like Metro Flex, right? So I'm wondering if you could just kind of walk us through your thinking in coming, refunding this light rail study.
Thank you. I see City Administrator Bob Quitz has some comments.
Well, I think the administration reacted to your conversation, and I think that there was a concern as we were listening to the council that momentum is really important and that to go for a year without doing anything was not something we felt comfortable with after the discussions that the council has. We went back to Minnie Dollywall, our City Planning and Development Director, and said, what might be something that's less that would keep that momentum going, continue to have this issue not only before the public, but also, I think, what came out to me from the council's discussion was sound transit, that, you know, we need to continue to keep this in front of sound transit as well as continue to have dialogue with the community. Minnie is on the line, and I'll ask if she has anything she wants to add, because this is really her recommendation back to the mayor to put that in. So yes, I agree that the council was kind of veering from, you know, further support for something like this, but it really was from the issues that the council raised that we went back and said, is there anything we can do? And Minnie was able to come up with that. Minnie, good morning to you in New Delhi, and would you care to add anything?
Sure. Good evening, councilmembers. That's exactly what it is. You know, we went back and looked at the Light Rail Planning Guide and the experiences of other cities that have had success with being good partners with sound transit if we have all our information ahead of it. Otherwise, we tend to react to something that sound transit has selected. So that's primarily, I think we heard council raised Mercer Island example where it wasn't well done, we've looked at Redmond's example where it was, or Kirkland's example. So looking at other local cities' experience of doing this work earlier, puts Issaquah in a good position where we don't have to react to something that sound transit proposes, and then there's a, you know, issue with the community's desires for the, plus, I think the biggest other factor is coordination with the over-crossing and under-crossing work that is going to occur. So our recommendation is at least, this puts Issaquah in a better position to have a locally-preferred station ahead of sound transit work, which will kick off in 2026.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, or Deputy Council President DeMichele?
Is it appropriate for me to comment on this, or should I wait for...
Yeah, just questions.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. And the last of the proposed changes we have for you this evening is to fund Downtown Issaquah Association. This proposal includes a 12% reduction to the city's contribution out of the general fund, which would mean in 2025, $26,400, and in 2026, $23,200. We would also propose a reduction in funds contributed through the Main Street Tax Credit Incentive Program from the 2024 level of $90,000 to $67,500 in 2025 and $45,000 in 2026. Before the city would offer this funding, we, the administration proposes to confirm with the Main Street Association about DIA's eligibility for the tax credit funds before entering into a memorandum of understanding for the tax credit funds and the general fund support. And next, I'd like to talk about timing and next steps. So here we are in the budget timeline, November 18th, with budget deliberations. Next week, we'll be coming back to with property tax adoption, and we'll be discussing revenues at that meeting, and then looking for the final budget hearing to happen on December 2nd. If council is comfortable, then we would propose to adopt the budget after the final budget hearing. If council feels like you still need more time to deliberate, you have more questions, more concerns with the proposed budget, then we have December 3rd, and final adoption could happen on December 9th. So again, the direction that we seek from you tonight is whether or not you agree with the administration's proposals to fund Metro Flex, make no other changes to the fleet fund levels, fund the light rail study with a reduced scope, fund DIA, and also whether we should plan to adopt the budget on December 2nd or December 9th.
Thank you. Okay, looking for any questions at this point? Councilmember Hunt?
At the last meeting, there was mention that the remainder of the contract, I think, for Metro Flex, got us through, partway through 2025. So when you, in the proposed budget, though, we're funding the full year of 2025, including the remainder of the contract plus the rest of 2025, or is it really only those couple months that we're, that we have to pay because we are in an existing contract? Is this extending beyond what we're required to do by a contract or just that? And so is it a full year, or is it...
It's just fulfilling the contract. I believe it is a full year, but I'm going to ask Emily Moon, who I believe is on the line, if she can confirm it's for the full year. But I believe it's really just, that's the intention, is through the remainder of the contract.
And I'll just reference, my comments from the other night was referencing the fact that we would have to have the 180-day announcement period, and so we were on the hook because we haven't been able to make that through the end of May or June, whatever that was. And so that wasn't the end of the contract, that was just the earliest we could get out of the contract.
So our commitment with this amendment, change to the proposed budget, is to continue the contract. In addition, we also need to sort through next steps beyond that, and so we'll commit, at least orally this evening, that we will do that and come back to the council probably maybe second quarter next year to say, okay, the contract, the pilot's coming to an end, we've continued to talk with King County Transit, this is what it's going to take to continue it moving forward. We also may know about the grant at that point. If the grant frees up these dollars, then that may be money available for the second year of the biennium to continue this beyond this. But what we're proposing this evening is to fund this through the pilot, and I see the Public Works Director is on. Oh, okay, it came up under Andrew. There's, and I would just ask Director Moon if I bespoke to correct me, otherwise, I believe that's where we're at. Otherwise, I believe that's where we're at.
Evening. Yes, the contract runs until the end of December 2025. So this funding would take us to the end of the contract.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Hall.
Sorry. A few, so a couple just other questions based on kind of the Q and A at the end of the packet. So thank you to whomever wrote the lengthy response on the CPD Active Transportation Study. I appreciate it. I just had no clue what it was and wanted more information. Seems like significant and important work that needs to be done. And we're, so I think if I read it right, we're relying on hopefully getting this grant to be able to fund that. So I was just wondering, and this doesn't have to be a now answer either, but what, what's our plan? Because it seems so significant in terms of something we need to do in the near term. What, what's our plan if we don't get the grant? Would it be to continue to look for more grant opportunities? Or would we try to find cost savings and look within? Or do we not see it as a near-term priority?
We would continue to look for grant opportunities and see how those grant opportunities may change over time. We have seen more grants for active transportation planning in the recent years. And so that's something we're still hopeful that we can achieve grant funding for. If we cannot find grant funding, then we would look to future years for funding that work.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification. And then two more points of clarification. So I had submitted a question about kind of a future conversation I'd like us to have about public safety revenues. Knowing if we were to actually do something in the future, we would account for those revenues through a budget amendment. But is there any reason why we would need to budget anything for like staff time or community engagement for having the conversation in the first place?
Um, we don't, we don't believe that such costs would be really significant, if any, to budget for. It would be using existing staff resources to be able to have those conversations before action is taken.
The same could be said then around this conversation we want to have for Eastside Fire and Rescue around the fire permit fees then. We probably have capacity in existing space to have those conversations without budgeting any.
I, I believe that's the desire as well.
And that's absolutely the desire. But I think the scope of that is a little bit too unknown to give you 100% declaration that we would not need outside resources to do that. Clearly, public safety, as we look at '25, the administration and the priorities that Mayor Polly has for next year, there's a whole variety of public safety, jail, fire issues that we're going to have to have front and center at the very beginning of '25 so that we can come to the council, you know, probably mid-year, next year, and have some serious conversations. Because certainly while we're, we're very pleased that this budget seems to be coming together in order to meet those needs, we are not convinced that the revenue streams will support them in future years. And so we want to get the council talking about that late spring, early summer, should there be any biennium changes that are needed and then beyond. But it's going to be, as we think about priorities for next year, that's a top five, looking at those revenue issues, safety.
Thank you. Good. I'm glad to hear. And I actually just thought of another question. Again, just thinking about it off the top of my head, so apologize I didn't send this in. The memo said we were largely in agreement around delaying the housing and parking studies. I had some suggestion around, could we look at kind of the housing and parking work plan that we had a slide detailing that Director Dollywall went through? Or actually, I can't remember who did it. Around the work that we're already planning in housing and parking and, and kind of as a justification for delaying the, the studies, which made, which makes sense logically. But had thought maybe we can look at that list and some of the other things that we're interested in as a council and looking at and kind of having the policy discussion about what makes sense, recognizing that some of those are required. I was just curious if the administration had kind of a response to having that exercise on council? Or did we feel like really the stuff that we have was required? And so we don't have capacity to consider other things like MFD or, or the other Eco Northwest kind of recommendations?
I would invite Community Planning Director Minnie Dollywall, if you have comments.
Sure. You know, we can certainly have whatever conversation we want to have about the work plan with council, with council committee, however you desire. At this time, yes, it's a staff capacity issue, the required items that we need to get through. We need to get through. But I think also we want to give some time for some of the MFD expansions that the council has agreed to, you know, with the Pioneer Program, with the shelter development, to see if there's anything that we can learn from that. And, and so we put in the work and effort to calibrate it accordingly. The other part, I think we, we mentioned in our presentation last time, was a lot of development feasibility we learned from the Eco Northwest work was tied to our parking requirements. So now that with the state bill, we cannot mandate any sort of structured parking that significantly improves development feasibility for develop, you know, for, for housing and other situations. And so before we roll out more incentives, we want to see what, what are we getting out of the MFD that we've already expanded? How does this parking play a role into it before we take up any policy work related to doing further work? That was sort of our justification for, maybe in the next two years, we give it some time for council actions to play out before we start tweaking them. And then we had an interim plan to work in-house with Arch on the Development Density Bonus Program to see if we can look at that specific program, which was also one of the recommendations from Eco Northwest report.
Oh, that, sorry, just to clarify, that item about the Development Density Bonus Program, that would be something we consider in the biennium with Arch?
Correct. So there's no funding request asked for it at this time. It, it's staff will continue to look at whether there's any efficiencies we can build into that program.
Okay, all right. So before more incentives evaluate what we've done and really understand some of these new requirements that actually might make some of the things we want to consider. Point. Okay. That makes sense.
Correct. And staff capacity, correct.
And staff capacity, okay. Thank you.
Always staff capacity. Any other questions?
Not seeing any, though I will always look at Councilmember Hall and see if anything jumps up last minute. But you've already been covered. So we have a moment for a community comment, public comment here. And so I will see anybody online. If you're on the phone, star three. If you're on a computer, raise your hand icon or send the host a chat message. And I will obviously look into the room and see if there's anybody here looking to make a comment. Nothing either way? Okay, fantastic. Then we're looking for feedback. And so the direction needed from the administration, we've got five specific areas that we definitely want to make sure that we cover. But we are council, feel free to ask others. Deputy Council President DeMichele.
Thank you. So we'll start with the Metro Flex. And I want to thank people for the creative way that you've put that together. And yes, I support that. I'd just like to make some general remarks about how we are approaching these transit and transportation projects. You know, we are one of 39 suburban cities. And then there's the big Kahuna, the city of Seattle. And they all go to Metro with their hands out and wanting services and wanting improvements to their transit. And I think our approach here, and also when we go to sound transit, the same situation is there. Everybody's asking them for everything. We have demonstrated tonight, if we approve this, that we are a strong supporter of first mile, last mile services in our community, that we back the Metro Flex program. And I think we need to take that same attitude for the Light Rail Study and position ourselves strongly. If we are not fully committed to these programs, we're gonna, somebody else will be fully committed and they will get those services. So I think we've just got to, we've got to stay the course when it comes to our backing of transit services and our backing of the Light Rail Study and our commitment to bringing that light rail station to Issaquah. I thought that, well, we had this previous discussion last week that Minnie, as I said, made an excellent case for holding on to this Light Rail Study. She gave the example of Mercer Island as opposed to other places. Is our voice going to be heard or is it Sound Transit's voice that's going to be heard? We want our voice to be heard. Our, our community wants our voice to be heard. And we get there by getting ahead of the curve, by being on top of this, of this process, rather than reacting to whatever Sound Transit brings to us. So in both cases, for Metro Flex and for the Light Rail Study, we just need to bear down and stay the course. When it comes to Metro Flex, we have one year. We've heard from innumerable people. And I've continued to hear comments from community members on Metro Flex. This is really something that people are very concerned about, really want to see happen. So as we go through 2025, I hope that we will continue our discussions with Metro about how they might be able to step up at some point and help us out. Or can we get grants? Or in other words, let's be looking at 2026 and see what we can do to ensure the sustainability of this program going forward. So we solved it for one year, can we solve it for the future? Thank you to Autumn for the explanation about the fleet fund. And yes, I would go ahead and approve that with no other changes. So I think there is a good case for that. And again, with the DIA fund, I appreciate that the administration has come up with a new proposal there. Again, can we continue to look for, or can we assist DIA in looking for other sources of funding? I know they're eligible for LTAC funds, for example. And are there other sources that we could work in partnership with them to see if we could fill the gap that's, that's been created? So those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're good on all of that. Let's go next. Councilmember Joe, then Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I'll start from the bottom, just to be different. My sense is that we could adopt the budget on December 2nd, unless I hear some different dissenting voices from my colleagues on, on that one. I appreciate the funding proposal for DIA, would support that. Appreciate the Light Rail Study, staying on the front burner rather than the back burner and support the $200,000 from the general fund, be devoted to that Light Rail Study. I also support making no other changes to fleet. I think that the experts in the garage and the experts that are watching the entire plan have given us ample justification for keeping that plan in place. I want to just spend a little bit of time on the Metro Flex briefly, as a point of personal privilege, I guess. I went to a, the Garage event that I think I told you about, and it was all about civics. And the young people that were there were saying that they didn't feel their voice was being heard. They thought decisions were being made by adults that impacted their lives, that they couldn't, didn't have a voice in. At the end of the conversation, I was able to give Council President Wallace the floor, and she was able to talk about our conversation that we had just had two nights, the night before, to talk about Metro Flex and our desire to keep that alive, and that program alive. And the whole tenor of the room and the whole attitude of the room changed to, hey, our voices matter because we had those two young people on Tuesday night that came and talked to us and said how important Metro Flex was to them. And we had Simon tonight talk about how important Metro Flex was to him. And now they think, I, I hope they think and understand that their voice does matter. And by coming and talking to us and other government bodies, they can make a difference because they are a member of the community, that belongs to this community, and their voice makes a difference. So I fully support the Metro Flex funding. I think it's good for our young people, those with disabilities, those that are elderly and might not have other transportation means. And I give great thanks to the administration for finding the funding there and making that a priority for this budget. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hunt? Thank you. On Metro Flex, we are proposing to fund the part of this program that we are contracted to fund. And I believe strongly that if we want to demonstrate that we heard the voices of the community, that we heard those students who came, that we heard our Hope Link representative who came and spoke to the importance of this for seniors, that we, you know, that we took into account the fact that we have seen on the map that our low-income communities are the groups that are, are really, those low-income folks are really the ones who are heavily using the service, which was a big part of our intent. When we think about that, what we want to do with this budget is focus on the things that are most impacting people's day-to-day and really also focusing in on equity and sustainability. This is one of the very few things that we are able to do to help give people an option for transit in our community. And I think for all those reasons, we're doing a two-year budget. We should fund this program for the two years in the budget. What we are doing right now, I think, is inadequate. It is what we are required to do because we're in an existing contract. So I appreciate my colleagues' comments about support of this program. And I think to, to demonstrate our commitment, we should do that. The other thing that I was thinking about is we all did equity training. And as part of that training, I remember that our, the person who was, who was giving us that training, which I reflect on often, saying that the, you know, folks that are requiring transit to get somewhere, they may not be, or, or folks that are students that are using this transit service, they may not be able to advocate as regularly. And so, you know, we need to take into account that we heard all of those voices. And I think, I do not think we should expect folks to have to come back in six months, next year, to advocate again. I think we should take into account that people took time out of their schedules for this. We heard them. We're doing a two-year budget. We should fund it for two years. On the fleet fund, I, I do think we could phase into that by, you know, taking into account some of the oldest fund, oldest vehicles first. And it is a big change from the way we've done fleet in the past. I think that is a potential savings that we could use to fund Metro Flex. I don't want to make a recommendation without any, any suggestion there. Funding the Light Rail Study is another potential area. I don't think we, this wasn't my, when I made my comments at the last meeting, I was expecting this to come back with, with no funding for the Light Rail for the next two years. I was just looking back at my notes from our last conversation. I think we have done great work with the community on early goal-setting. I think that this is something that we can move a little bit slower on because I think the Light Rail overall is, is going slower. So I, I don't think prioritizing the spending of $200,000 on this over the next two years would be my top priority, and given all of the other things that we're cutting. I, I respect that, that there is an importance to tracking this. But I think over the next two years, and given our budget situation, I would work on doing this in-house or maybe adjusting if our circumstance changes. But the information we have right now, I think we can, can put this on the back burner. I agree with the funding of DIA and appreciate the, the change that was made there. Also appreciate all of the comments that have been coming in about the, about the services provided by DIA. And as far as December 2nd or December 9th, I think it seems like we're, we're all aligned. There has, there has really been in this budget, the one thing that we've heard, and I've heard too from so many community members, the one thing that we, I've heard is really about the Metro Flex. And so, you know, I think if we can address that, that'd be great. There's not a lot of other pieces that I've heard. That and the community's human services funding is another one. So I think if we can address that, I think that would be, that would be really important. So I think if we can address that, I think that would be really important. If the administration needs more time than December 2nd, then that would be a consideration. But other than that, I think December 2nd seems in the cards.
Got dueling microphones over here. Think I saw Councilmember Hall a moment earlier?
Everyone seems to be going in different, I'm going to go in random order now, so we mix it up a little bit. So starting with Fleet Fund. I just want to say I agree with the direction of the Fleet Fund that's been proposed. I think what stuck with me the most is what the mayor concluded and what you said today, what the mayor concluded with at the last meeting, which is that just the picture of the Fleet Fund isn't great. We committed to looking at the picture and it's not great and it's not going to feel good to correct these positions, but it's better to be making these investments sooner rather than later. And all the more important to get started now because you mapped out kind of in the memo how implementation is going to take quite a while. So I buy the argument around Fleet Fund. I completely agree with Councilmember Hunt on the light rail study. I understand the argument that keeping the ball rolling in some way, even if it's not the same way, it's very similar to like the equity assessment that we were, is good. But I think that there are other community priorities that stand out as more important in this biennium to me, like Metro Flex and things like that. So that's where I feel like on the light rail study, I don't think that we would necessarily lose out on too much within this biennium. And that seemed to be demonstrated to us in the previous meeting as well. With regard to DIA, agree with the new approach here. Thank you and thank you. It was nice to hear from other people in the community about them. I haven't talked about Metro Flex, and that's because of the last question, whether or not to adopt December 2nd or 9th. I'm going back and forth on this one because there are a couple of things that are on my mind. Metro Flex, it would be great to fund it for the two years. But I think the approach of funding it for 2025 is fine, knowing that it seems like we're fairly aligned and supportive of Metro Flex on this council. So the administration should be prepared to come forth with a budget amendment at some point to fund 2026, finding that savings elsewhere. Which path you decide to take doesn't necessarily matter to me as long as it's funded for the two years. Because if right now we decide we don't want to fund the second year until we find grant funding or those other external funding, that makes sense, understanding that we're going to do a budget amendment, but the risk is we're going to have to find savings at some point because I'm going to want to see a budget amendment to support two years of Metro Flex. Hopefully that made some sort of sense. I can retouch on Metro Flex a little bit, too. The other things that were on my mind, which is why I was thinking, okay, maybe December 9th was the housing and parking study, although I buy what Director Dolly Wall said. Yes, we can have the conversation about like what are our priorities here, but maybe we look and evaluate what we've already done, understand some of these new requirements, acknowledge staff capacity and CPD and so on. So I'm okay delaying those. The only other thing that made me think about maybe December 9th is I wasn't quite, I felt like I need, I feel like I still need more information about the parks and open space acquisition program. I would really like, it's good to know that these funds are largely like restricted. Looks like there was like re-park impact fees. So like my first idea was like, Metro Flex, clearly that's not something we can do with these funds. But I just want to get into a little bit more like how often we're spending it down and by much. And I completely get that it's for opportunities that come up and you can't anticipate that. But I also want to just make sure we're having, I have confidence that we are appropriately funding the fund at the level that it should be year-over-year, considering that there are other important community priorities that we also have to take into account, too. So I don't know if that would require another meeting to get information or if that could be, any year-over-year information could be put in a memo. I guess maybe I'll stop here, see if you have any kind of initial response to that.
Council President, I may, we plan to have an executive session on the 25th on the topic, on park and open space acquisition.
On historical use of the fund or?
And current opportunities that are present today.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought it was, more current. I mean, if the conversation, it seems like it would be more of a policy conversation outside of executive session. I guess what I want to know is like where has it been over the years? How often are we drawing it down to close to zero where we have to kind of refill the bucket? And, you know, is there space there? Consider using funds for other things, knowing that it's kind of restricted.
And I have difficulty in open session addressing this really specifically, other than to say this will be a topic of conversation next week.
Okay, then I'll.
And I guess we will see where we're at after that conversation.
Okay. Well, then I'll look forward to that then. The only other thing I just wanted to put on radar was just thank you again for the answer about the needs of the court. Something that continues to worry me is just the downstream impacts of our investments and public safety and police. So if staff needs to at any time during the biennium, come to us for additional court investments. That would be something I would, wanting to prioritize, be really mindful of. Put that out. Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Mart?
Thanks. What a difference a month. Month ago, we were talking about how nobody ever comes to city council meetings anymore. Post-COVID, we just can't get anybody to come into a city council meeting. We just have to come up with something that people really care about, right? So I am in, I'm in the camp for, I would do Metro Flex two years if I could wave a magic wand. But I am also convinced that the administration has heard loud and clear how this council feels about Metro Flex. So I'm also convinced that next year they will figure out how to make 2026 work. But I would do two years if it was up to me, but I'm fine with one year because, like I said, the administration has hurt us. Fleet Fund is fine. Light Rail Study, I would kill this. I would throw my clog into the machine as the Luddite that I am right now. We funded ST3 almost 10 years ago. We're all paying tons of money on it. We put such faith in sound transit when we funded that, knowing that we weren't going to get most of the benefit. But we thought we were going to get some benefit. And then what's happened in the intervening years is, I mean, they've come here and they've said, we know that 554 is like so much, we have so much more traffic going into Seattle than we do into Bellevue, but guess what? We're going to make you go to Bellevue anyhow. I don't want to go to Bellevue. I want to go to Seattle. That is where it's all happens. So there's this long history, I think, of sound transit not listening to us. And by the way, they did that back when we had somebody on the sound transit board. How much worse will it be if we don't have anybody on the board? So I need guardrails before we start getting within a mile of what that station is going to look like. I need guardrails so that they won't just do the thing that's cheapest. We have so little control in these billions of dollars that are going on. And they will do what, I mean, they will build what they can to address transit. And if that's 2,500 parking stalls, I mean, just go look at Atlanta. Look at the end of the lines of all the MARTA stations. It's all two giant 1250 parking lot. That's what they'll build because that's what's cheapest. So I need to know that there are guardrails on what they can build here in Issaquah before I want to get within a mile of that. Because we'll get what they want to give us because there's so much money involved. And they'll say, well, how dare you hold up the poor residents of Sumamish and North Bend and Snappalmie for their getting transit? If you just put in 2,500 parking stalls, you know, all those folks will be able to come to Issaquah and then get on the train. And we all know that that's not what our community wants. So I have, I continue to have huge concerns and I would zero this one out. DIA, I'm on record for saying I want to have all the organizations that we give money to come in on a regular basis and talk to us about what they're doing. I hear loud and clear that there's a lot of folks in the community that value DIA. I still want to know what we do with our investments with DIA and what we get for our investments with DIA. But I am supportive of this move going forward. I hear the community on it. And then adopting on December 2nd versus December 9th, I don't care. The only things that we do as a council is we write checks and we write laws, right? This is the writing check part and it's the most important part of a job. And if it, you know, we'll sell no wine before it's time to, for those of you who are old enough to remember the Ernest and Julio Gallo commercials from the 1970s. And, sorry, sorry, Zach. But, you know, we'll be done when we're done. Thanks.
Okay. I'm going to throw my comments in there and then we'll see if there's any round twos. I'm also going to go random just because I can. That's how I wrote my notes. Fleet, I'd like the Fleet Plan and the concept to come to a council committee. And I think we really need to work this over. I appreciate that there is a lot of backlog to need here. And I'm not willing to take that out of the budget, but I'm also just not ready for us to make those purchases yet. I really just feel like we need to be able to get into that, much like we do with our capital improvement plan, and really have an understanding of how this serves the community and whether each of these purchases are really on the right scale. So I would love to get into that, but, you know me, I'm behind. Anywhere where we're behind on maintenance, I'm going to support that. I just want us to do it fully and really understand what we're doing there. DIA, I appreciate that we've come together and, you know, made some movement here. I really think that anything that is a utility tax credit should be given and stay local rather than going to the state and not have a 25% reduction for 2025. That being said, it's a few thousand dollars, so I'm not going to put my foot down over that. The areas where I will put my foot down on and where I think you've heard the most contention is Metro Flex and the light rail study. So my thoughts align most with Councilmember Hunt. I think our community has strongly talked about their support and it is the people with the least ability to advocate who are the users of this service. And so the fact that we have gotten comments on this at all and that most of the comments have been on that really indicates the importance of this service is just getting off the ground. And I really think that our community wants us to fund it, not just for 2025, but for both years of the budget. I heard Councilmember Hall and Councilmember Mart say, hey, we told the administration what's important to us, so we think they'll come back to it. We told them on the 12th this was important to us and what they came back with was a one-year funding. Our job is to do the hard things and to set a two-year budget because that's the way that we do things. And I think it's a much better situation to make the hard decisions about what we would cut to fund our priorities than to, and like if we get a grant, we're going to do a budget amendment that would just remove the funding for that and it would go back to the general fund. If your proposal is do a one-year funding and then we'll come through, then we're just saying we're going to have to find that money in the future. So I think it's our responsibility to find that money now if it's a priority. Toward that idea, I really cannot support spending $200,000 just to tell sound transit that we're serious about something that we voted for as a community for ST3 and spend $200,000 of our money now to plan for something for 2041. We have community needs now and we have community priorities now that are super important. The idea that we're doing this so that we can coordinate with an over-under crossing, that has no funding. There is nothing out there that, nobody is going to plot money down in our hands to say, here, you guys need another over-under crossing for the I-90 for the city. So I really think that we need to take a step back from that and recognize that we've got some really important needs right now. What I would like to do is fund Metro Flex for the two years. And I think we can do that by eliminating the light rail study and finding some additional funds in land acquisition, Fleet Fund adjustments, or general fund. It's not that much money at that point. Budget dust, I believe it's been called. That being said, if the council doesn't agree with that outright, I would suggest that we leave the funding for the light rail plan in the general fund and have that item be unfunded and then determine mid-biennium which of those two priorities between Metro Flex and the light rail are important. If, at some point, I don't want to spend the money on light rail planning and then have us have to come back into Metro Flex. My first priority would be, don't do the light rail planning and spend it and commit to two years of Metro Flex. But if we're at that point where we can't quite come to a full agreement on that, I just want to make sure we're not spending the money and can make that decision. So those are kind of my thoughts. Depending on how further conversation goes, it would be dependent on whether I think we can go for December 2nd or December 9th. So I don't think we came to full consensus on two of the bigger items. So I'm wondering what the administration heard or whether we want to do a second round of comments.
Second round? Okay. Deputy Council President DeMichele?
Well, yeah, it sounds like I'm in the minority here, but I will come back with all due respect and say, if sound transit is going to do what they're going to do anyway, the only way that we can change that course is by knowing where, what we want to do. And we won't know what we want to do unless we begin to do the studies and the research that bolster our decision about where we want that station to be, what we want it to look like and so forth. So I know that it's 22 years away or more, but 22 years is a blink of an eye in the planning world. It will be here before people know it. We won't be here probably, but it will be here. And if we have no plans, we have no research to back it up. If we just say, well, they're going to do what they're going to do anyway, yes, they will do what they want to do anyway. We either get our voice out there or we wait for them with whatever they've got planned. So I personally am willing to hold off on the funding for 2026 for Metro Flex, see where we could go with that, and at the same time, get that study for light rail going so that we are going forward on both fronts with our transit planning. So if indeed I am in the minority and there's not the votes for the light rail study, I would like to see that money go to Metro Flex and fund that second year. Thank you.
Councilmember Mart?
I hate disagreeing with Barb, but I'm going to in this particular case. I was struck earlier, we were talking about our goals around multimodal transportation. The only thing that's changed in the 15 years that I've been on council is Metro Flex. And everything else, the landscape of multimodal transportation in this city, which we talk about, we must talk about every month or two for the last 15 years and was probably the 15 years before that, has not changed. So I so wish it had, and it's part of why I've been so excited about Metro Flex. I don't want to just, I don't want to let sound transit do what they want to do. I want to slow it down until we understand, I want somebody from them to come in and tell us that they understand that they can't just build the least expensive thing. We We live so often, if I, if I, if I were to still down what the last 15 years is, is we make laws and then people do the thing that is most cost-effective for them. Developers and the county and the state, they all do the thing that's most cost-effective to them, not the thing that we want them to do because we have less control than we think. So I'm, I understand the urge to be at the table, not be on the menu, but I, I wanna get out of the kitchen. I don't know if this analogy works very well, but until such time as, like I said, that we have, we understand that, that we have, when I, when I heard the description of how they're gonna go about doing this, they're gonna decide what they wanna do and then they're gonna do it. And so that scares me because I think what the economics is gonna point to is so different than the vision that we have for Light Rail in our city. So until I hear better on that, again, I'm gonna be the Luddite and throw my clog in the windmill. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna push back and make sure that I get what you said. You're saying zero dollars to Light Rail. Are you saying Metro Flex 2025 or 2025 and 26?
I already said that if I could wave a magic wand, I would do 2026. I just said I was, I just said I was okay with one year, but I would prefer two years. So mark me down as prefer two years.
Okay, and if that isn't the case, if we go with only 2025, then the 200K for the Light Rail Study would just go back to the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. As part of my day job, I'm in Snohomish County quite a bit. There's a committee called SKIT, which is Snohomish County Committee to Improve Traffic. And one of the parties that is a consistent participant there is Community Transit and Sound Transit. And the government affairs person for Sound Transit is named Eric Ashley. And I've had the benefit of having some conversations with him about Issaquah in 2042 or 2043. And he did encourage me to try to have as many different conversations within our community so that we could really articulate what our vision was for the terminus for this spot for Sound Transit when it comes. And, and our budget speaks loudly in terms of what our priorities are. And I think that having that $200,000 in there is important to show that we have skin in the game and money on the table for the high stakes poker hand that's gonna be played between Sound Transit and this city. We can look at a couple of examples in terms of things that have worked and things that haven't worked with Sound Transit spots. I think Director Dolly Wall talked about Redmond doing a really good job in terms of planning. Federal Way also has been doing a really good job of planning. We can probably get some information from both those cities to come back and find out how they funded it over what years, what worked, what kind of committee they had, when it was in place, when it was best effective from the city point of view to give direction and vision to Sound Transit for what the community really wanted to see. Federal Way did a great job because they scoped out and planned where they wanted the station by planning the zoning, by planning the road configurations or the little elements that would make their vision possible. I'd like to find out more about what Federal Way did, but it seems to me that the in-house work that we do for $200,000 to find out what our vision is, what we wanna see, then goes to that next step of trying to lay down the zoning and the, the kind of layout for what we would like to see there so that it is easy for Sound Transit to come in and say, you've done all this work, let's now talk about what we wanna see there, rather than them saying Mercer Island, you're gonna get this station right here on I-90, and since you haven't talked to us, since you didn't come and communicate with us, that's what you get. And you can sue us, you can take us to court, but that building is already there. So maybe we're too early in the conversation, but I really support Barb D. Michelle's idea that we need to have that 200,000 in there to have skin in the game and our poker chips on the table. Our budget speaks to Sound Transit as to how serious we are about what we're gonna do. So I would implore my colleagues to put the $200,000 in for the Sound Transit terminus. Discussion, vision, it's in-house work. We're not using consultant that's gonna ask us for a ton of extra money, but it's work that we can do in-house. If it turns out that we don't have the staff to do it or don't have the time to do it, we've at least put the marker on the budget of $200,000 on there so that Sound Transit does look at it. They can see that over the years, we put that money in there, planning for the future because we're serious about the terminus and what we want to see in Issaquah at the end. So alternate plan, the plan I would propose would be keep the funding for next year for Metro Flex, keep the $200,000 in there for the terminus study, direct the administration to continue to try to find money for Metro Flex through granting or other options for the next year, 2026. But that funding, I think, for Sound Transit is fairly important in that conversation. We don't wanna end up like Mercer Island, we wanna end up like Redmond or Federal Way. So the one request I'd have for the administration is if you can find out what Federal Way and Redmond did that was successful and the timing for those pieces along the way so that we can be more informed as to when we might need to put that money in there, that would be the ask that I would have.
Councilmember Hall.
I'm just not feeling as cynical about Sound Transit, so I'm, I'm a little, I don't feel as, I just, I'm not feeling that there's this urgent need, this biennium, to be moving forward that work, especially given our challenging financial outlook. So I agree with Council President Walsh to use that funding to support a second year of Metro Flex instead, assuming it's not restricted funding, which I thought, I think it's general fund, so it's not. And then, and then, you know, maybe we find grant funding for our Light Rail station work, stuff like that. It's just, to me, it seems like this is a more pressing need in the community at the moment.
Councilmember Hunt.
I agree with the proposal to move the 200,000 from the general fund, which is currently earmarked for the Light Rail Study, to the second year of Metro Flex. And there's also a few other things. There's a dais, a new dais for when we move this, $50,000, which is in the biennium. So $50,000, and that's something that is marked as something that council could consider because we said we potentially don't need a new dais. So there's other things that we could, we could chime in on to make up that extra money, but the 200,000 gets us most of the way there. I support that. I think this discussion of amendments, that our job right now is to look forward two years and align this budget to the best of our ability with the values of the community. And there is this pressing need for Metro Flex, and I think we should reflect that, reflect the community comments by funding it for, for the two years that we're budgeting for. As Councilmember Mart said, we write checks, so we're writing a check to show that we care about this program, we want it to, we want it to continue. And I think we should do that in both years that we are budgeting for.
Councilmember Hall.
Can I ask a quick question about that? I can't remember if we got into this last week. Do we, are we making the assumption that the costs for Metro Flex would be the same in 2026 than it would be in our current contract? Do we have any reason to expect it might be more expensive?
Absolutely. We do not have an offer of service beyond the end of next year. And in talking with King County Transit, they're not sure that it will be continued. They're facing multimillion dollar cuts before the state legislature deals with additional cuts. So we do not have an offer of service beyond the end of next year.
Okay, that's helpful context.
But with that said, Madam Council President, the administration hears you loud and clear. So there's no, there's no issue with that. The issue is operational. If King County Transit is not providing the service or does not provide it at a cost, I mean, we're already paying a fairly significant per ride cost, and I think the council is saying, is it community value? Okay. But if it goes from 200 and change to 400 and change, is that the same thing? Are we gonna pay $100 a ride? Does that make sense? If the issue is providing that transit for those in need, there are other opportunities, other options. And I think the administration would like to have some flexibility in providing those options. So I think we can say that we hear you, we will continue to work forward, that the understanding from the councils, you'd like to see this through the biennium, if not with King County Transit, some other operator. And so we will work with King County Transit beginning of the year. They let us know in a conversation that Director Moon and I had with them, what, about two weeks ago now, they were non-committal with everything. They are saying they are having significant budget problems and they were not prepared to talk beyond that. So I think, again, as we talk about Sound Transit, as we talk about Light Rail, we need to control our own destiny, that we cannot sit back and hope that others will look upon Issaquah and say, we'll find, we'll take care of you. And Mayor Polly, in presenting this budget to you, I think that's a theme throughout. So we will commit this evening to continue to work on the shared ride option, and if it is Metro Flex, great, if it's offered to us, great. And we will come back to you prior to the meeting on December 2nd with a response as to what a 26 funding strategy would look like. You know, if I may, Council President, kind of respond to other comments the council's made, or would you like to take further comments from the council?
I'm fine with that. I will make my secondary comments after and then we can see what other...
Well, then, then let me wait until the council's finished.
Okay.
And we'll give you a roundup of where the administration thinks we are here at the end of the evening.
Yeah. I, I think your comments about whether or not service could be provided for 2026 is important and something that we can certainly look at. From my perspective, I would be very hesitant to fund a program that was some sort of, you know, single ride opportunity. I think one of the benefits of this is that it gets people an ORCA card and it gets people used to using the metro service. And so whether that's training our young folks, that this is an accessible service and something that they can use not just to get around Issaquah, but also throughout the region, I think is an important element of all of that. And so I would certainly hope that we could rely on King County to continue that service. And if they were going to be eliminating that service from us, I would hope that they would also be looking at eliminating it from everywhere because, just because it's a new program, doesn't mean that ours should be on the cutting block first. I don't mean that it should actually be eliminated everywhere, just that, gosh, it, yeah, that would be quite unfortunate if that was something that was looking at. I am not supportive of funding the Light Rail Study, not because I don't think we should... I think we should have a community conversation about where the Light Rail Station is, but I think one of the things, when we were talking about at the garage on the civics conversation and just in general, you can get community engagement on things that people are interested in, especially if you have maps and locations and places they can put stickers on. I, I think this is the exact thing that we can do, the initial work internally and have a conversation about where does the community want this station to be? I think that's the stage that we're at right now. I, no, I, I think what this would be is $200,000 spent on something. I think we can do that internally with our staff capabilities and get a sense of where the community wants a station before we get into, you know, any of the land use areas or any of the, is it feasible in those locations? I think we need the community input first before I'm willing to put forth $200,000 on something that would be for a project that isn't going to happen for 20 years. So I, I think it's important to recognize, I think we can do elements that get us moving toward that concept without necessarily spending that much money. Any other comments or do we wanna hear from the city administrator at this point? Okay, city administrator?
Thank you, Council President. Members of the council, really appreciate the deep discussion this evening and glad that we seem to be whittling through the list. So I think we hear that the DIA spending is in line with the council's thinking, so thank you on that. Regarding the fleet fund, this is something we'll continue to bring to the council and in my discussions with Mayor Polly, as we look at the work plan for 2025, we will, we'll look at ways to continue to involve the council in that. Again, with Metro Flex, we are committed to continuing this program. We will continue to talk with King County Transit. The practical reality is, is they may come back and say, we're not able to do this. And so then the question will be, are there less optimal programs that might not teach kids how to use an ORCA card, but still would allow them to, and seniors and others, to have access to the service? So we will continue to do that. So that leaves the Light Rail Study. Again, the mayor is extraordinarily committed to seeing this through. And through the comments that you have all made, I think that there's, there's really two sides of a coin. There's the one side of the coin that says, if we are not diligent, it will never come. The other side of the coin is, it's 20 years away, we got more important things to focus on. And, you know, I, I think the mayor is gonna have to be thoughtful over the next several days and reflect on these comments and decide what she would like to ultimately have as a final proposal for the council to vote either up or down on that. You know, the, the commitment of the community, the ongoing dialogue with the community, you know, much of this we can do with city forces, but there are pieces that we cannot. And so we can go back once again and talk with community planning and development and see if there is a different scope of work for that. I think what monies might be allocated in reserve for 2026 for a shared ride, Metro Flex or something else, I think is something that we will also go back to see. But I, I don't know in the eyes of the administration that that funding and the Light Rail Study are tied, that they are separate standalone issues, which the mayor will ponder over the next several days. And so I think from the administration's standpoint, we have heard enough of, from the council, that with really the Light Rail Study funding and a commitment, maybe more fleshed out commitment to Metro Flex or a shared ride program in 26, with those two issues resolved, I think we are done. And so with the council's concurrence, we will continue to work toward that for December 2nd, come back with final recommendations on those two points, the Light Rail Funding and then any additional funding for Metro Flex or a shared ride service in 26. Council can agree or disagree, then we package everything up for final consideration.
How's that feel, folks? December 2nd, or is there something that we need from the administration in the interim that would get us there for December 2nd? Councilmember Mart.
So in this, in the spirit of maybe helping for the, how the mayor might respond on this, I mean, you know, what, what do we get for $200,000? Like what, how does it move the conversation forward? Why now, right? I mean, ST3 was passed eight years ago. Why is it all of a sudden urgent now? The answers to those questions might help me understand. me understand why this is important to the administration. Thanks.
And in part, just building on the work that we have done in the last 12, 18 months. We have had community meetings. We've had the term of our, the light rail planning guide, which has been developed, the money that the council's already invested through ARPA funds. All of that's been spent in the last 12 or 18 months. And I think the mayor's concern has been to not have a pause. And so consequently, then, the question is, what does that look like not having a pause? And so we went back, as I said earlier this evening, you know, I was prepared not to fund this, recommend not to fund this either. You all convinced me kind of otherwise, despite the fact that you were convincing yourself not to do it. What I was hearing was the importance of continuing the discussion. And so that's why we went back and had that discussion internally. But we'll have it again and come back to you. But again, we don't see the light rail study funding and Metro Flex funding tied. We'll come back to you and deal with them both separately on their own individual merits. I think, again, the only two remaining issues, council can vote up or down based on the mayor's final recommendations to you, and hopefully we'll... But I, I think it's that issue of momentum. It's that issue of continuing, environmental issues are going to be extraordinarily important. I think Issaquah's view of environmental issues are different than everyone else's view of environmental issues. And as we look at the world, perhaps that's going to even accelerate. So we just want to be thoughtful. So we'll go back once again and talk some more over the next several days. And again, there'll be two final recommendations from the mayor on those two points for your consideration on December 2nd.
Yeah, I just want to say, I really appreciate what Councilmember Mart said about, you know, these are the, the ways that you're thinking about it and what would be useful in understanding that. From my perspective, it would also be, what can we get out of $200,000 that we couldn't do internally? And then anytime we make a decision to use internal staff time, we're choosing not to do something else.
Absolutely.
So I think that would be an important element of if we do more of the work internally, what does that push back? And I think that gives us a fuller picture of what that is. So, any other comments? Does the administration have what they need?
Right.
Okey-dokey. So looking at that, go to the order, anybody? Okay. We are adjourned at 10:03 PM. Thank you.